Good evening. Tonight is the February 8th, 2021 Select Board Meeting and a statement I need to make pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by tuning in to Comcast Channel 8 or Verizon Channel 26 or online at www.northandovercam.org. If you have public comments, please visit www.northandoverma.gov backslash SB Public Comments. And with that, in calling to order, I just roll call vote of our board members, please.
Laura Bates here.
Phil DeColigero here.
Rosemary Smedeely here.
Richard Valencourt here.
And Chris Nobley here. To begin with, we'll start with public comment. And again, as I noted earlier, we accept comment in via the website at www.northandoverma.gov backslash SB Public Comments. Tom Manager, do we have any public comments for our meeting?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do see one public comment. It is one of the attorneys for 64 Main Street letting us know that he will be here for the public hearing. Other than that, we have no public comment.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. Well, with that, our first order is actually to go into licensing. So I'll hear a motion to move into licensing, please.
Mr. Chairman. Chair, I'll move with licensing.
Second.
Thank you. And a roll of vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
Rosemary, you on mute, maybe?
Rosemary, if you are on mute on the phone, it's star six to come back.
We'll just have patience here for a minute.
Mr. Chair, might I suggest we table licensing at this moment and move to comment as recommended budget until we can get the licensing chair back online?
I'd like the idea, except that I think that's a large discussion and I hate to have that cut up. Plus, we've got folks meeting because we've got public hearing. So I'd like to just give Rosemary a minute more to connect up if possible, given the kind of discussion we're going to have tonight, if that's all right. I appreciate everybody's indulgence here. We just want to try and be considered all the way around.
Mr. Chair, she's no longer on the call. I will try to call her.
All right. So let us just hang on just one more minute while Melissa does make the call. And then pending that, we can close the the hearing and the board.
Can you hear me?
Thank you, Rosemary.
I don't know. That was very strange because I could hear you fine and I wasn't muted. It's just on my phone I wasn't, but I'm there. So I just dialed in again. So I'm glad that worked. I'm sorry about that. I have no idea.
No worries. We're all dealing with technology. So we've had our vote and we're in licensing. It's all yours.
Okay, great. Thank you. We are, we are now in licensing. We, so would you like me to read the statement? Well, for public hearings, I do need to read that. Okay. So just to start off, we have several things this evening, as you can see on the agenda. Application for Walgreens, application also for the full liquor license of 64 Main Street. And after that, Town Council will be going over the revision to the alcohol beverages regulations. So we have a very full plate and a lot of moving parts. So bear with me and Suzanne, Town Council, if you see a need to step in if I'm doing something out of order. But again, we've got a lot of, lot of moving parts. So I would entertain. So the first item is application of Walgreens of Massachusetts LLC for wine and malt off premises package store license at 800 Waverly Road. As you remember, we did have the license up at Rite Aid and Walgreens and Rite Aid had some sort of arrangement between the two stores. So when Rite Aid closed, the liquor license, I believe, went to Walgreens, but then it sort of fell off. So we are here to discuss the application again of Walgreens. So I will entertain a motion to open up, well, I guess to move into the public hearing. And then after that, I'll read the statement.
So Chris Nobley here. Move that the Select Board acting as licensing commissioners open the public hearing to receive comments regarding the application of Walgreens of Massachusetts LLC for a wine and malt off premises package store license at 800 Waverly Road.
Laura Bates, second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote?
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, yes.
And Rosemary Smedeely, aye. So we are now in our public hearing for Walgreens. Let me see here. So this license is just for the sale of beer and wine. There is the only application on the agenda for this particular item. So the public hearing on the application of Walgreens in Massachusetts DBA Walgreens, number 102091, which is Robert McGowan, manager for a wine and malt license, 800 Waverly Road, North Andover is now open. So the application has been forwarded by our licensing clerk and includes all the necessary documents. Included in an email from the building inspector, the fire inspector, both stating that there are no issues with the application. The police department also communicated that the quarry and fingerprinting raised no issues with the applicant. So is Mr. McG, please correct me if I'm saying this wrong, McGowan, or McGowan, the manager, is he with us this evening?
Yes, ma'am. I am here. It's pronounced McGagan.
Oh, my goodness.
It's okay. It happens all the time.
Well, I'm part of the same club. I have a, my married name is Smedeely and nobody can read it, spell it, or say it. So anyway, so we're two different parts of the world, but same problem. So would you like to speak to us a little bit about your application?
Madam Chair, my name is Joe Devlin. I'm an attorney from Upton, Canal and Devlin with offices in Newburyport and Boston. And I represent Walgreens of Massachusetts LLC. I just couldn't find the mute button, unmute button. I'm sorry about that. This is like my fourth different, I'm a city councilor as well, but we use Zoom. And I'm just barely learning how to use that after a year and a half, so a year. So we're here before you, as you recognize, Robert McGagan is here. He's the general manager. You're familiar with the operator. Actually, about in sometime in 2017, early 2018, Walgreens bought Rite Aid. So they were operating the Rite Aid, Walgreens bought Rite Aid, right? And they were operating the Rite Aid from about the end of 2007, beginning of 2018 until the light, about a year and a half until the location closed in, at the end of May of 2019. The intention was to transfer and relocate it. At that point, it was under Walgreens of Massachusetts LLC's name anyway, but to relocate it to this location. The only way I can explain is the pandemic set in and they missed the renewal. And so we had to reapply for it. But you are familiar with this operator. They didn't have any incidents while they had it for the year and a half and operated up at 525 Turnpike Street. The public need here is about the same as it was at 525. I actually did that application in 2013 for Rite Aid. They're responding to customer requests. It's a convenience item that, that people want. A lot of people are stopping home on the way home from work. Very busy road, as you all know, 114. They're picking up a prescription. They're picking up other convenience store items and a bottle of wine or a six pack of beer as part of that. They're not looking the corner of the market here. It's about the same setup as at the Rite Aid. It's two to three coolers to the left over by the photo and the, and the UPS FedEx area. It's called their market area. And then they'll have about 12 feet of one side of an aisle for wine. And, you know, they're very familiar with selling alcohol. They've got, I think, six locations in Massachusetts currently. All of their employees will be trained between the, if there's an approval tonight and between that and the, the approval by the ABCC. It's going to be tips or some other recognized and similar training program. They have an in-house training program as well. They also have a very sophisticated POS system that requires the cashier to enter, prompts them to take an ID and to enter the date of birth. So they have 100% carding policy. The POS system tracks what gates are entered and looks for patterns. Because, you know, they want to try to catch somebody who's just writing in 11, you know, 2000 and whatever. That makes it, you know, the person 21. If that happens, I spoke to Rob and his, his area director. They said that would, that would mean termination. And they have people that, that, people review that, those POS records and then communicate that to the management at this Walgreens. So they also have cameras focused on the cashiers to make sure, and that's reviewed to make sure that they're doing their job. They also have a camera on the sales area that's the monitor at headquarters and communicated any problems directly to Rob and the management staff. You can't beat having people on the floor though. So they have four to five people on the floor, including management staff and more on weekends. And they're taught to watch the alcohol side and they haven't had a violation in Massachusetts. So knock on wood. One of the reasons is they have heavy regulation and ID requirements for the pharmaceutical sales. So they're, they're well versed in, in, you know, making sure that their employees comply with these types of regulations. Robert McGagan's a resident of Lowell. He's been at the GM here since 2019. He works at least 40 hours. He actually joked, at least when I met him at the store, he said he works more than that. He will be, again, tips or light program certified so that it complies with the town of North Andover's training regulations. And I thought it was interesting to note, they have a lease until 2082. So they're committed to be in North Andover and, and for a long time. And so they want it, they want to, you know, continue to serve the community well. It's hope you can approve this license and application. And we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. That was a lot of detail and very comprehensive. So do we have any questions from the board or the commissioners?
Just one point of confirmation or clarification. This is only for pickup. Is there going to be any sort of delivery or facilitation of delivery outside of the pharmacy of alcohol?
Go ahead, Rob. No, but go ahead, Rob.
No. Yeah, no, we're not planning on doing any sort of delivery. Just pick up.
Mr. Chair, if I, oh, Mr. Chair, if I may ask a question?
Of course.
Mr. Devlin, so, excuse me, at the Rite Aid, they used to have a dedicated register for the sale of beer and wine. And any consideration, and if you said it in your, in your overview, I missed it. Is any consideration being given to have a, just a dedicated register for just the beer and wine? And also at Rite Aid, I remember when we licensed Rite Aid, we also requested some screening to be put in place because the hours of operation of the pharmacy and the store were beyond what the hours of the liquor sales were allowed. Would also have some screening put in place to prevent, just to block that out during those hours when liquor sales is not allowed?
So the first part, we hadn't discussed the dedicated cash register. I'm not sure there's as many registers here as there was at Rite Aid, but I'll leave that up to Rob. We, the company purposely hasn't set exactly where they're going to put the alcohol because they wanted to be flexible and respond to, to, you know, something, any, anything that you might want to have them do. So they're certainly willing to do that if they need to. It's not quite this as easy here where the coolers are located because there's a, there's a, the photo there, that's one of the bigger aisles. But, but, you know, they, they certainly can work to do anything you want. So then that's why they have it. We didn't have it specifically down on there to enable them some flexibility to change it if they had to. So if that's something that you want us to do, they can do it. But Rob, how about the cash registers? Could you dedicate one eye, one register to alcohol?
Sir, just for the sale of alcohol. I know that on every register, we do have a pretty good system that it won't like allow you to make sales outside of, you know, certain restrictions. And the company can also change that as well. So if, you know, there's an hour where we can't sell something, they can probably make it so no registers can sell that product or that SKU at particular times throughout the day.
Oh, yes. I remember Rite Aid did that as well. Yeah, that's a good solution. Also, would there be any ID checkers in place? You know, we're, we're sensitive because it is approximately to the college and a lot of underage kids that are out looking for possibilities for procuring alcohol. Do you, would you be putting in ID checkers as well?
So I can answer that. So on every cash register, the scanners, we actually do require all employees to scan the IDs. And all the registers do have that capability to scan the IDs, you know, for verification.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That was one of my sales points as well. This, this license is actually moving it further away from the college, which is a positive, I'm sure, to the town of North Andover. But it, it's, you know, they hadn't had any problem when they were closer. It's probably because of the scrutiny that they, they have on it because of the, you know, the other, the other higher, you know, they, they sell some, some drugs that need high monitoring. So, but, but certainly their POS system is pretty sophisticated. You know, I think, I think it reads the back of the card. So they have a built-in scanner.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions?
Madam Chair, if I have a question?
Yes, of course. Go ahead.
I just, to reiterate, if I heard you guys correctly, did you say that you have 100% ID policy? Were you ID everybody and scanning everybody's ID? You just, okay. Thank you very much.
Phil, do you have anything this evening?
No, I'm fine with the application. Thank you, Bill.
Okay. So having read that this application is complete, all, all applications, alcohol, full alcohol and wine need to be reviewed for completeness and determine whether or not the basis of the information presented. The application will serve the public need and a managed protection and good. During our review, we may impose reasonable requirements for operation of the business. The most, the, the most important thing is that the application must be, must be complete or they can run the of being denied for not being complete. However, this one has been stated that the application is complete. So having said that, I would entertain a motion, if there's no more discussion, to, we'll do the
We're still in the public hearing phase.
I'm just going to hop in, Madam Chair, to let you know that there is no public comment in the packet on this item, Laurie, unless I missed it, but I don't see anything.
No, we didn't receive any public comment.
So you can feel free to close the public hearing.
Okay, so at this point, if nobody has anything else, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, I move that the Select Board acting as licensing commissioners close the public hearing to receive comments regarding the application of Walgreens of Massachusetts LLC for a wine and malt off premise package store license at 800 Waverly Road.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor, say aye by roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Rosemary Smedeely, aye. So I would then entertain a motion on the board's commission's desire or for someone to make a motion.
Chris Nobley.
Madam Chair, I'll move that the acting as licensing commissioners approve the application of Walgreens of Massachusetts LLC for a wine and malt off premises package store license at 800 Waverly Road.
Madam Chair, second.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor say aye by roll call vote.
Laura Bates.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, yes.
And Rosemary Smedeely, aye. That is a unanimous vote. The license is granted. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Welcome back into the licensing world for the town of North Andover.
All right. Thank you very much. And I hope you have a good rest of the meeting. Rob, you want to say anything? Want to thank them?
No, thank you for your time and I hope you have a great evening.
All right. Well, now I'm off to my own meeting. See ya.
Okay, thank you very much. So the next phase is a little bit different. It is for the full alcohol license. Just give me a moment to move paperwork to that section. So as I'm moving, picking up the paperwork. So what we'll be doing this evening is taking the application order of which they were received. One moment.
Madam Chair, maybe I can frame the, the process going forward? Would that be helpful?
Yeah, that would be great because I'm, I'm still putting, pulling my papers together as we go through. But yes, please, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. All right. So before the commission tonight is, is there are three applications for one license that is available in the town for an all alcohol package store. The town has met its quota for the issuance of all, of the package store licenses. One license was not renewed and that used to be operated at 64 Main Street in North Andover. That was not renewed, so that became available. And once that becomes available, anybody can apply for the license. So what we, what the regulations and the recommendation is, is that you take the applications and the time and the order in which they are received. So it's the first in, and that is the application that's considered by the board. You have typically, you're going to look at two issues, whether your application is complete. And also then when you get to the substance of the application, whether it's in that particular location is in the best interest of the community and serves the community need. So currently, we have the first application that was submitted is the Osgood Liquor. It's for Osgood Liquors. And I'll turn it back over to Madam Chair. I don't want to take over your meeting for you. So I'll turn it back over to you.
You're doing fine. No, you're so far. Okay, so Osgood, so Osgood Liquor and hold on one moment. One second, please.
So I can help you out. It's the application of Emma Deep Inc., DBA Osgood Liquors for an all alcohol premises. I'm sorry, all alcohol off premises package store liquor license to be located at 997 Osgood Street. It is time stamped and dated January 4th, 2021. And that is, so that's the first application to be considered.
Okay, thank you very much. For those of you at home, a lot of paperwork on all these applications this evening. The forwarded to the commission by the licensing clerk includes most of the necessary materials. Missing from the materials is the building inspector's recommendation. He states that he cannot provide a recommendation until the technical review committee, known as the TRC Committee, reviews the layout, parking and location of the business premises. The general license application requires that the applicant request a review of their application by the TRC. The fire inspector has provided the requirements for fire safety regulations. The police department provided information stating that the quarry and fingerprint fingerprinting raised no issues with the applicant. This application is incomplete. Would the applicant please present their application? Sir, are you with us this evening?
Yes, this is Mitesh Patel. I am from Osgood Liquor. I am here.
Okay, would you please talk about the, the application from your perspective, please?
Yes, ma'am. I did the application myself. I am North Andover resident for last 25 years. I worked in IT finance right on 114. I have other businesses like hotel motels in the area as well as Albany in New York. And I would look, would like to do a package store in North Andover. So I presented document whatever I could. If I get the permit or further thing, I can happy to work with town inspector and do whatever they need to do. They are asking me to do.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Yeah, I, further thing, I did not done lot of like building plan and stuff like that because it's all contingent on the liquor license. I did the, I contacted the landlord. I have LOI. Everything is in place. Architect parking analysis I submitted. Floor plan also submitted, but I haven't done further if, because everything is contingent on the liquor license.
Okay. Okay. It is contingent upon the liquor license, but we do, it is required that we have a complete application.
Madam Chair.
Do we have any, yes, I was just getting to that.
Do we know why the application is incomplete? Was it, I mean, was it because of COVID and the TRC isn't meeting as regularly? What, what is the holdup? And do we have a date when the TRC was going to take this up on their agenda?
COVID also, and I am also new in this application. I am working with my attorney, so if I, if I can have more time, I can happy to give you whatever you guys, building inspector or fire inspector want.
The TRC is still needing, just in this application, one was not requested. Madam Chair, may I?
And that is, that's up to the applicant to request that?
So it is in the regulations that it is required, and so yes, typically what would happen is that they would, they would contact us to request the TRC meeting. Jean usually is in charge of those, and I see her here watching closely. Rebecca, we have so many different people today to help out, but typically they do contact us, yes.
I know.
Yes, so I, this is Jean, we have not received an application for TRC meeting for this location.
Now, is that, my understanding that information of everything that is required when you do put in for the application, that you're given the information as to what is required. And so, for the TRC, that was not requested according to Jean by the applicant at this time.
I have not received an application for TRC meeting for this location, was there?
Do we have any other questions or comments from the other members of the board, the commissioners?
So should we, as we consider this, formally open a public hearing to solicit feedback and allow Dipple to present his application, or you know, I realize that technically this application is incomplete, does that negate the need to have public hearing?
We should still have the public hearing, okay Suzanne?
Yeah. Sorry, yes, the public hearing should be opened, and you should hold the public hearing, and then you make a determination on what is before you, the record that is before the commission.
If that's the case, Madam Chair, can I, can I move that the board of, the Select Board Acting as Licensing Commissioners open the public hearing to receive comments regarding the application of Emma Deep Inc. for an all-alcohol off-premise package store license at 997 Osgood Street?
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Chris Nobley, second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye by will call vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, yes.
And Rosemary Smedele, aye. So we are now in a public hearing, and do we have any questions from the public regarding this application, or any comments that were written and sent in to us?
Madam Chair, there's no public comments, there is, I believe, someone with their hand up right now. Yes. Unfortunately, the chairman can't see you because she's on the phone, and I believe it is the attorney for the application?
Yes, hi, my name's Nick Ambly, listen, I'm an attorney for 64 Main Street Liquors LLC in arson garage. And I, my only comment with respect to this application, I mean, I know I'm gonna be presenting soon enough, is that, I mean, we dispute that, I mean, that Osgood Liquors is the first application submitted. My client was, has an email from the town clerk saying that they could not submit an app, all applications had to be submitted on January 5th, not January 4th. My client did in fact submit on January 5th at 8:15, indeed, he has the application date stamped from the town clerk. You know, he, he should not be penalized for giving information from the town that the application had to be submitted on January 5th. If it was had to be submitted on January 4th, he would have submitted it on the 4th. In fact, our office did the application on his behalf, and it was done in December. He was sitting on it for, for two weeks waiting for instruction from the town. So, that's my only public comment, I mean, I'll be presenting on his behalf when, when my, my time is, whenever you call, call our hearing, but I just wanted to put that in on the record.
So, Madam Chair, if I can assist here, so I, I believe that the public hearing has been opened, and it is time for you to present the application.
I'm presenting now for 64 Main Street Liquors?
No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought you were representing, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Representing the applicant, I apologize.
Yes.
Madam Chair, there is no other public comments.
Okay. And so there's no public comment. Anything further from the applicant, or their representative, if they, if they have one? Sir, are you?
Madam, would now be the appropriate time to ask just a, for a little bit of clarification about this process, and I'm sorry, Suzanne, specifically if I'm making you repeat yourself, but, so, we didn't let applicants submit an application until January 4th? Or we as a town didn't begin accepting them, I just, I wanted to put the, the statement that, um,
It's
the attorney before us. I wanna put his statements in context because it's, I, I don't know if again, I'm missing a little piece of this or not.
Um, may I see?
I, I'm
Town Council.
Okay, I, I can respond to your question. So, one of, one of the critical things here is to, that a town cannot prohibit somebody from submitting an application. And the, I believe the date that was given to submit the application was on January 5th. This application was submitted on January 4th, and so it is the first application submitted. That, the commission, because we have no regulations which state with, you know, who will go first in terms of what application is going to be considered, we take them on the first filed basis. And so because this was filed on January 4th, it should be considered first.
I, but, so why, I guess I've been trying to understand the why the attorney before said that the town clerk's office sent an email saying that he couldn't submit it until the 5th.
I wonder if it was
I, I can forward you the email.
So
Is it customary that we would tell someone they can't submit an application?
I, I don't believe, I don't believe it is, I don't believe it is customary, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that process. What I would say is we essentially, we don't have the ability to refuse an application if an applicant wanted to pursue something that position against the town, then the courts would find that they have the right to, to file the application. And so that's why you consider the first one filed first.
So, Phil DeColigero, the way I looked at it was that the Osgood Liquor submitted theirs first, but they both, in my opinion, they both were submitted at 8:15 on the 5th. Because even though they got it first, we asked that they not be submitted till the 5th. So I think we're taking this one up first because it was the first one in, but it seems to me, to be fair, because we said the 5th, that they both were, should be considered on the 5th. That's the way in my mind I'm working it.
So, a tie, essentially.
A tie, right, if we, if we explicitly told the, the applicant to submit on the 5th, and once submitted, and one brought theirs down on the 4th, a day early, well, okay, that's fine, but, you know, it wasn't supposed to be until the 5th, and we can't, as I believe the attorney said, we really can't penalize the other applicant because they did what they were instructed to do.
Madam Chair, this is Laurie Berzloff, do you want me to clarify what happened?
Yes, that would be great, Laurie, thank you.
Our offices were closed on the 5th. It was, we were all working from home, and we were not allowed to come to the office until our test results were in. So we were closed, however, there was one person in the office, they accepted the application not knowing that the applicant was told that we were not taking them until the 5th.
Okay, that's, that helps clarify a lot of this, so, thank you, Laurie.
Yeah, thank you, Laurie. And what happens if two people wa, you know, this is for town council, what happens if two applicants walk in the door at the exact same time? Makes it a little bit awkward as well, but having said that, so this, in, so town council clarify this for me, please, so that, so the submission on the 4th in your estimation is fine, under the circumstances. So we, so, but we're hearing this applicant first, then the next one second, and the, the next one is the, the third. So, in the process, we are supposed to make a decision on this applicant, or is there a process where we can defer the decision till we hear all three, but in, in the order of which we receive them in town hall, could you clarify that for me, please?
Well, you've, you've opened, you have an application before you, so you're supposed to view that application on the merits that are presented before you and on the record before you. So it wouldn't, you, you wouldn't review an application on the basis of another application submitted, it's not something that you sort of compare and contrast the two applications. Your standard is, does this application serve the community need at this particular location? And, and you also look at whether or not the application is complete.
Okay, so what you're, what you're advising the board is to make a decision as we go through, in the order of which they've come in, correct?
That is what I'm advising the board to do.
Okay, thank you, I just didn't know with this information about the 4th, if that would have changed anything, okay. Okay.
Madam, Madam Chair, let me ask a question here, it's sort of a hypothetical. But if we had multiple applications in, and they are not complete, do we have a procedure for, for dealing with that? Or are we obligated to take any steps, if that's the case?
So, um, go ahead Suzanne, I was gonna say, do you want me to answer you, but why don't you go ahead and answer it?
Okay. So one of, so if an application is incomplete, your, the remedy or the response of the board can be to deny that application. And if you look at the ABC's frequently asked questions, one of the three reasons that, most common reasons that applications are denied is incompleteness and inability of an investigator to find out the information regarding an application. So that is a basis to reject an application, you also can approve an application with conditions. So the condition, you have the ability to approve an application stating, on the condition that the applicant goes through the TRC process and receives the recommendation from the building inspector, the application for a license is granted.
So, to see, oh, I'm sorry, go, go ahead, and, and then I'll ask my question.
Just, just following, just, just make sure I understand, so what you're saying to us in essence is there, we're not obligated to decline it, we have the opportunity to consider it with conditions. Just, just trying to understand what our real options are as we're going through this, and what our obligations are. That's correct, right?
Yes, they, so it's my understanding the ABC requirements are complete, the only two things lacking here are under the town license application, which is the recommendation from a building inspector, and the TRC.
And if a license, and so if, sorry, but just gotta follow it through, so if a license was approved and there wasn't those approvals, what happens at that point? Does the, do they get, is there a chance for remedy, or does the license back for availability for the next party?
If the, I'm sorry, I'm gonna make sure I understand your question, so license is granted, but then they don't meet the conditions? Right, if you put a time and date by which they have to meet the condition, if they fail to meet the condition, then the license isn't granted. Cause it would be a conditional grant.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I, can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Suzanne, were all the applicants given the same information that the earliest they could submit their application was January 5th?
I believe so.
Okay. So, I guess, I'm back to the fact that it, the fact that it was submitted on January 4th doesn't really matter to me. Because obviously, if somebody is getting in early and everybody else was following the instructions, that, that, that doesn't matter. If it was earlier, so to me, I'm looking at both of these kind of as coming in at the same time, and I realize we're doing them both on their own merit, but that's my opinion.
And I think that's fair enough, especially after what Laurie discussed with us, I, I don't think that, I, I don't think they should be penalized because it came in what could be conceived as earlier, I, it should be, this application should be considered, I agree with you. My bigger concern is, are there any applications being submitted tonight, and I, town council stop me if I'm stepping out of order or process, that if we have an application in hand that is totally complete, it, it's just that we're being forced to make a decision or make a recommendation on what would be considered an incomplete application. Are we allowed to know that there, there is one application that is totally complete?
Well, you're, you certainly have, you certainly may have that knowledge, you have only had, this is your first public hearing, and you're considering this application before you.
And so if I could jump in then for this, sticking to just the application for this particular location, so this is, unless I'm completely wrong, am I correct that this is the location where there's currently a salon, like Bellevita Salon, right before the Mad Maggie's location, correct? And so that's, that's an existing closet with several other existing businesses in there, right?
Yes.
I mean, I, I personally, I mean, I, it's an incomplete application, and I would say if we have a license available, once they get this information provided to us, per, per the application process, if we have the license still available, great. If not, you know, you can wait till it's available, but I, you know, my immediate reaction is it's, it's not even as if it's a standalone location, it's a it's a plaza that already has a bunch of other different businesses in there, and I don't, I don't see how I can weigh in on the affirmative without knowing without getting a recommendation from our building inspector, you know, we have our building inspector and our building department looking through everything from tents outside for outdoor eating, looking for cars don't, no injured people, I mean, I, I don't think it's unfair to say we would need this type of information, I certainly would need that type of information before making a recommendation. And so, I mean, I, I think that it doesn't make sense, me, again, speaking only for myself, and we're one of, I'm just one of five, it doesn't make sense to move forward or to hold up, I should say, this whole process based on, again, one incomplete application, I, I would like to encourage this individual to go get it reviewed by the TRC, and if the license is still available, or another one opens up, great on both counts, pending the response, but I mean, as of right now, I, I don't feel comfortable giving a thumbs up without having the normally use when making this decision. Unless anybody else, you know, from the public or from the applicant, would like to weigh in regarding this particular layout or the proposed layout.
Would anybody like to comment on that? Well, I, my, my feeling is that having three applications before us, that we really should only be acting on a complete application. The thing with liquor license that we all know some of us have been doing this longer than others and but liquor licenses, we we like to stick to, you know, strict rules, regulations, conformity. And I I think if there is an application in place that is complete, meets the requirement, meets the bylaws, so forth and so on about the building, so forth and so on, that's the one that should be considered. And I feel badly saying this to this this applicant, but I I liked what you said, Phil, is moving forward that that for whatever reason, we don't choose one of these applications or another one comes available, that this person certainly could reapply. But it's a it's serious business. Liquor licenses are very serious business, and we should have a complete application. It's just a cult the way the system is that we have to go, we're going by the the ones that come in first. It does make it, it does make it somewhat difficult. Would anybody else like to comment?
If that's the case, Madam Chair, I would move that the select board acting as licensing commissioners close the public hearing to receive comments regarding the application.
So we have a motion to close.
I'm gonna I'm gonna pause. I didn't finish my my thought.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
To suspend this pending more information in the event that, you know, again, a license is available in the future, or was it, does it make more administrative sense to just close this hearing and we can reopen it should um this applicant bring his plan before the TRC and and get the missing information that, you know, we're currently looking for?
I would go ahead and close this hearing.
Okay, in that in that case, I'll move that the select board acting as licensing commissioners close the public hearing to receive comment regarding the application of the M D Bank for an all alcohol off premise package store license at nine nine seven Osgood Street.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dick. All those in favor say aye will call vote.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, yes.
And Rose Nice Meddely, aye. So the public hearing is now closed. So would you would anybody like to make a motion at this time?
I mean, I the direction that I would informally give is is just one of the commissioners would be that to get the missing pieces put together. Because again, we we never know, we don't know how the rest of this meeting is going to go. We don't know how the other two applicants are gonna go, and we don't know how other similar license holders in the community are going to move forward. You know, hypothetically, one of these licenses could open up tomorrow. Um, we're, you know, we might have two. So I mean, I would encourage anybody who's serious about doing something like this to just, you know, cross their Ts and dot their Is, and um that way they're ready to move forward. But in the meantime, you know, I, you know, I I would motion not to accept this application as is.
So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
So just to be clear, your motion is to deny the application?
As as presented, yes.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I I just wanted to say again, I think, you know, for for a couple of reasons, the the application being incomplete, and I am a little hung up on the fact that it was submitted early, and others were given instructions to submit it on the fifth, and and they they met those timelines, but this one was submitted early. So I still think we may have a flaw in the process that we might have to work out in the in the event that happens again. But I think we just need to, but under those two things. And also, I'd advise the applicant, they can always petition town meeting as well to petition the state for an additional liquor license at town meeting. That's it.
So we have a motion and a second to deny this application at this time. Are we ready to vote? Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Rose Nice Meddely, aye. Thank you for coming. We're sorry um that um that you, as my colleague said, that we would require you to have a complete application, but certainly willing to work with you in the future if one becomes available. Regardless of tonight. If something comes available tonight, we don't know how the votes will go further in the evening or something in the future. But thank you very much for coming in. Okay. So moving on to the next application. Hold on, please. Again, this is the next application is for the sixty-four Main Street liquor license, and this application filed with the licensing clerk includes materials required. The A B C, the application is complete and did I move to the wrong one? Hold on a moment.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. It may be appropriate to open the public hearing for the sixty-four Main Street Liquors application.
Madam Chair, I can do that if we could move the board to select the select board acting as licensing commissioners open the public hearing to receive comments regarding the application of sixty-four Main Street Liquors LLC for an all al- all alcohol off premise package store license at sixty-four Main Street.
Chris Nobley, second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Yeah, thank you for that. I'm reading. That's right. This one is actually on the premises. Okay, that's what threw me a little bit on this one. Okay. So and that would so we have a motion and a second for the public hearing. All those in favor say aye will call vote.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, yes.
And Rose Nice Meddely, aye. So this this application is for to remain on the premises of sixty-four Main Street of which the license that we are discussing this evening. And this is the manager is our son Sharif. I hope he got pronouncing that name correctly, is Mr. Sharif. Are you here this evening?
Yes, I am. Arson.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry. I
That's all right.
Mispronounced your name. So
Arson, my name is Arson Shiraj.
Oh, okay. Could you spell it? Your last name, please?
S H E R A J.
J, okay. That's what's throwing us. I it's I have an F in my document, so it's like um S H E R A F. So it's Shiraj. So we'll make note of that. Thank you for correcting me.
You're welcome.
Okay, so moving on with this on your application. So the application filed with the licensing clerk includes the materials required. The A B C C application is complete as in the town application. The building inspector has submitted a finding that the location is acceptable, but he notes that it was previously used as an all alcohol package store. However, he also notes that the currently the signage at the location does not comply with the signed bylaw, and it should be brought into compliance with the bylaw prior to operating it. The planning director communicated that the TRC was requested and the applicant was informed that it was not necessary. The fire department also approved the application. Police department provides information stating that the quarry and fingerprinting raised no issues concerning the applicant. And now we'll Mr. Shiraj, would you please present your your application?
Arson, you come, this is Nick Amblyotis. I I'm also on the
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, I'm Arson's attorney. And I am an attorney for Ankle's Von Salinas, Amblyotis and Delaney and Pivity. And I'm here on on behalf of sixty-four Main Street Liquors, and as you mentioned, arson create is arson through this new newly formed LLC has filed for this for this liquor license. He wants to keep the the license at the premises. He is the owner of the sixty-four Main Street property. He's owned it since two thousand and eleven, and he's invested a lot of money in 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 the in the property, and he's invested in North Andover, and he tried to, he he wants to purchase this, he wants to obtain this liquor license and to improve his property and and to run the business. He's run the Liberty Bell Restaurant for many years in Melrose. He has a fantastic reputation as a business operator in Melrose. Utilizes business skills to to run this the liquor store in in the town of North Andover in his property. The the this location has already obviously been approved by the licensing board. The application's in order. Mr. Shiraj has a great reputation and again is a great businessman, and I arson and I and or I will be happy to address any 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 questions that the board may have with respect to the application as submitted.
Okay.
If arson want to add anything, please do.
Yeah, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would just like to thank you for your time, and I appreciate the opportunity that you actually given me and listening to what, you know, well, actually, the opportunity for the application and listen to what I have to say. In regards to this license, to this store, it's been on premises for a long time, and we bought the building around two thousand and eleven. And as you know, as all North Andover know, the building was a sore thumb sore thumb in the area, and we did our best to clean up, and I I believe we achieved that. And the old the the previous building inspector can testify for that. Gerald Brown and police department can testify for that too, because I were very pleased with the fact that we took the building over and we cleaned the area. Because as everybody knows, there were a lot of shady situations going on in that surrounding. And and it was two thousand and eleven when no many investments were happening, because it was after the crash. And after that, after us, Heavenly Donut came next door, which is another person that we we individual that we know. He invested and fixed the building next door, and then not long after, we were approached by Brat, the owners of Bradford I'm in Brat Brat School, Broad Street School, and then to to generate a design that was was a practical and and then very, you know, very aesthetic for us and for the town, and we agreed to that. How we agree with that? We agree because we share the driveway. We, you know, we set it up in a way that it works for everybody. And then it's clearly that the area generated a a much better aesthetic for the Main Street North Andover. We just speak, but but that said is that we do things right. We don't cut corners. And for that, and any any references that you might require from me would be, you can just go directly to the police department in Melrose, fire department in Melrose, health department in Melrose, and they can testify and can can speak of the way we do things in our business. So that's why we appreciate very much if our application is taken to consideration. I've been not to take much of your time, but I just want to let you know that I I've been aware of this license being available way before anybody. But the lady that had the license, she was extremely sick, and I I I personally found it very insulting and very inhumane for me to do to negotiate business decision with her when she was dealing with she had cancer, and it wasn't a right right time for me, right frame for me to to negotiate business with her, to to transfer the license to my name from her. Even though as a landlord, you know, she was ten at a will for over for almost ten years with us. We didn't even have a list together, and she was there just, you know, because I had a great relation with her with her, with Joanne Malillo, who owned the license previously. Unfortunately, she passed away in June, and and that's that's why we are here. But even the attorney, the town attorney can testify to this because I was the one who gave the town attorney the information of the person who previously owned the license, because the town attorney wasn't aware and couldn't couldn't find, she didn't know who was the who she needed to contact for this license. And I was in, and so I've been in contact with the town for a long time for this license, and in regard to this conversation leads to the who is first on regard to applying for this license. I could apply for this if I knew that I could submit the application. I could apply for this in July. But I I followed strictly the rules of the town. I did exactly
I I I just want to interrupt only because, like, I I just for clarification purposes, like, our director of operations, this was like the this was their family's, like, the town knew who owned this license. Literally, our staff, it was the relatives of our own town staff. I just wanted to put that into context, because it just seems weird to suggest that the town wouldn't know who owned the license when literally the town's very relatives owned the license.
I I I I phrased it wrong. The town and the couldn't get in a hall, couldn't go in contact with the person where the the license couldn't get in contact with the person. I I I I phrased it wrong. They they didn't have the contact informations. That's it was, it probably is an irrelevant point. I just wanted to make a point that I was, I could have made this license, I could have submitted the license way before, but I really followed the strict rules of the town. I didn't want it to like break any rules. I didn't want it to to, you know, cut any corners or or go in front of anybody.
Sure, this is Rose Nice Meddely. I I understood what you were trying to say, so I I I I wouldn't I wouldn't worry about that. And I think everyone appreciates the kindness that you've shown to the family while this while the the present owner was, the prior owner was quite ill. However, what concerns me more because of the strictness of the rules that that your application is complete, but unfortunately, the building is is not in compliance with North Andover sign by law, which prohibits signs blocking the windows in a North Andover alcohol beverage. It's regulation number seven, and it requires that all premises but must be in compliance with all local and state regulations, and that
May may I say something regarding the sign?
Okay.
This is an application for a new license. With this isn't a transfer of an existing license. The business is not operating. It's closed. He has to, he he has to obtain, he has to obtain the license and then, you know, obtain part of part of opening a new business is going to sign committee and getting a sign. You know, the 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 liquor license application is complete. You know, the sign, obtaining a permit for a new sign for his business is a is a separate step. I mean, this is, you know, how can he go and get a sign for a business if he doesn't even know he's getting a liquor license yet? I I I I have I have an issue with 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 the statement that the the liquor license is incomplete because the sign that he he may and may not be using is from the previous owner who 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 abandoned the license is not in compliance with the town. It just doesn't seem to with all due respect, it doesn't seem to, you know, to make make sense that that that, I mean, this is an application for
I mean, this is an application for, I would, I would, I would agree with you if we were transferring an existing license, but this is an application for a new license that's reverted to the town. And that should be a condition of the, of the approval that he obtained, uh, approval from the town to the town of North Andover for a new sign. That, I mean, that, that to me makes sense. I mean, you know, I've, I've done these license hearings all over the state and I've never, you know, I've, I've, I've never, you know, I, I know you have your own, certainly you have your own rules and, 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 but I don't, I don't see how, how, how non-compliance of an old sign from a, from an old business that went defunct uh, has anything to do with application for a new license. Uh, he's gonna a, apply for a new license and then a part of his opening processes, he's gonna go to the sign, the sign review board and obtain a sign, a, a, a approval for a sign. So I just wanted to add that in there.
Yeah, yes. And I understand that, why you would say that in the confusion. What it is, it's not the new sign. Cause you're right. Why would he, what if he decided to change the name? It's the fact that there, it's, um, what it says in the documents is that the signage blocks all the windows, which we do not allow for liquor establishments. So it's similar to what you're saying, but not exactly as you said it. That there's, the windows are all blocked. I shouldn't say all, they're blocked. And that is, is not in compliance.
May, may I, may I ask this question? I mean, if.
Of course.
Uh, just asking a question. If my client was asking for this license and moving it to a new location, that's an empty vanilla box. I mean, he's not gonna have approval from the sign, sign, from the sign board, committee board because he would have to do the build out once he obtained the actual liquor license. So, I mean, to, to, to make this a requirement of his license and say that it's incomplete, in my opinion, is, you know, is, is really an injustice to, to Mr. Shiraz. Um, I, you know, the other applicants that are applying for this license, uh, I'm not dealing with the sign board because they're, they're moving in, they're potentially moving their license into a, a prospective new location. So to put this, this, this burden on Mr. Shiraz that he doesn't have the, the approval from the line, from the, uh, the license, the sign committee just because it, it's an old sign that from an abandoned business, uh, that, that burden is not shared by the other applicants. So I don't think it, personally, I don't think that should be a consideration. Obviously, you know, I mean, that's, that's how I see it with the guy to the sign, just the issue of the sign.
I under, I understand your point. Town council, would you like to comment on this for us, please?
Um, certainly, I, I, it was my understanding that the reference was to the building as it stands now, that there are signs in the windows and there's a particular zoning sign by law that, um, the building inspector determined wasn't in compliance with the zoning by law, not to do necessarily with this license application. And because Mr. Sheriff is the owner of the building, that's where the issue came up, I believe. And it's a notation that if a, uh, package store is reopened in that location, that the building comply with the sign by law.
Would, would, that would be an expectation I think we'd have for.
License, right.
Correct.
Um, and so.
Exactly.
That's my.
And, and in most, most instances, an applicant doesn't come before, I mean, at, at least tonight, you, you normally, if there is an application that comes before you in a location with an existing zoning, um, violation, that would be noted, that building inspector in his review of the application has an obligation to note, here's the building, I reviewed this building with, with regard to whether it's in compliance with all the rules and regulations. I'm noting that it is in compliance with the zoning by law at this point. And so that's what he's referring to.
And we full, we fully understand that, uh, and we'd certain, certainly Mr. Shiraz would, would, would address any issues with regard to the sign if granted the license, uh, without question.
Well, that would be part condition of.
Right.
O- opening in any event, right? So.
Of course.
Yeah, yeah, comes with it.
Madam Chair, in all this discussion, I do not want to lose sight that we're in a public hearing. So at this time, we do not have any public comments on this item. Um, if there wasn't a public comment, we would have attached it to your agenda. Uh, so no public comments on this item.
Okay, thank you. That was, okay. Does the board have any questions? Further questions?
No one. If, if there are no further questions, Madam Chair, then I would move that the select board acting.
Can, can I, can I jump in real quick?
Who is I?
Uh, this is Darmish, uh, I believe up next on the line. With Mukun Jelalsee.
Uh, you're, that, I, I believe, so you're next, you're the next applicant.
I just, I just have a question.
Um, is that appropriate town council that we're hearing from another applicant?
I think we're still in.
No, it's not at this point. No, eh.
I know, but we're still in public, uh.
So the, the commissioner is holding a public hearing and only people who are recognized by the, um, the chair of the commission may speak?
No public is allowed?
Like, so, so the chair, the chairwoman could, could recognize, um, Mr. Dave, and I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your name.
Yes, he could, but the conversation would not begin until he was recognized to speak.
Okay, but you feel so it's, it is appropriate that we've got another applicant speak during another application that.
We just, we just did that during the prior public.
Yeah.
Where.
Yeah, I'm also, I'm also a resident of, uh, North Andover, so.
Yeah, so during a public meeting, the public is allowed to speak regarding.
Okay. Irregardless if it's a, a different applicant. Okay, okay, sir. Be happy to hear from you. Go ahead.
I, I mean, I just wanna know if you guys are making the decision before you're, you know, our side of the story too, or.
Yeah, that's the complicated part of this, this system.
Yeah, and, and.
They're going in order of which they were received and it is, it does make it difficult. I will grant you that.
I'm, I'm sorry. For the record, I would like to let you guys know that we were told that the, uh, time to put in the application is also, uh, was January fifth in an email. So I have that, uh, in the email as well, so.
So just to clarify, the app, the application that we are considering right now was brought forward on January fifth at eight fifteen AM. The next application was also brought forward on January fifth at one forty-three PM. So this application is next in line.
No, I, I totally get it. That, that's not the issue. I, I, my, my first question was, I, I, I don't know if you guys are going to the, to my part of the application, are you, are you guys gonna vote, uh, before? You know, even if you get to the, uh, to my application, I guess.
I think, sir, that town council's advice is that they should vote on the applications one at a time in order to make a determination. So that I, I believe they will take action on this application next.
Okay.
Yes. Do we have any, any other comments?
I'm good.
Okay, everybody, everybody else is okay?
Madam Chair, can I just ask a quick question of arson?
Of course.
Um, I just, for, we, just for further clarification, you, you plan on running this yourself, correct? This is your business, correct?
Yes.
Um, she's talking to the applicant.
I'm sorry, I, I.
Is this Shiraz?
I think.
Yes, yes, I do.
You do, okay. Um, and the restaurants that you own, you said you don't currently sell alcohol at those locations though, right?
Not, 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 not currently, no.
Okay. And I saw, and the other thing is I saw in your letter that, um, obviously we're a college town, right? Um, and you'll take those, um.
That's all right.
World that we live in, right?
Yes.
That, yeah, that you'll obviously take the precautions of, um, scanning licenses and whatever needs to be.
Yes, I will. I will do exactly. The town will make the list of the necessary things that they're going to require from me. I will make every single point on the list. I will make sure it's gonna get done.
Okay.
And no, no, no offense, no offense on that. I intend of investing on scanners to make sure that the licenses are determined whether are real or fake.
Okay, appreciate that. Uh, you're obviously the owner of the building too, so I, I would imagine you have the best interest of that.
Indeed.
Um, yeah, no, that, I think that's it. I just want to, and for my own clarification, just because we approved the license, the liquor license, if we approve it tonight, then he goes through the process of a building permit to reopen the location, correct?
It really depends on what he's doing within the the building and whether or not it will require a building permit, right? If there's construction, et cetera. Um, but he will have to go through the ABCC process, um, and comply with any conditions that you put on the license.
Um, but to, to reopen it, does he have to go through an inspectional, a certificate of occupancy? Does he need to go through inspectional services?
That's. Yes, yes, he, he will. If he's intending to do any work in the building, he will go through, um, the building inspector and the fire, um, inspector. And he has been through, oh, I, I, I saw Jeanette, right? So I was hesitating about the TRC, but I just remembered that they, they've already been through the TRC. And there are particular recommendations that were made probably during that TRC meeting that have to be complied with also.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if the building commissioner is still on, but I think irregardless of whether he has to go, any work needs to be done within the building, he would still need a certificate of occupancy to open. It's my.
That's what I thought. Thank you, thank you, Jean. That's what I thought. He still needs a certificate of occupancy. Um, okay, thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Do we have anybody else? Um, I guess I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, we close the public hearing for sixty-four Main Street for a full liquor license.
Second.
We have a, was that you Phil second?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Rosemary Smedelia, aye. The, uh, public hearing is now closed. And I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I.
Um, yeah. Go ahead.
If I heard Phil first, was I correct?
Yeah, that's, uh, Madam Chair, I'd motion approval of the license, um, submitted for sixty-four Main Street by sixty-four Main Street, um, Liquors LLC.
We have.
I'll second that.
And was that you, Dick, that you seconded it?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, yeah, just a, I mean, my, my position on this is just pretty basic. I mean, the way that we operate our licensing commissions is fairly straightforward, especially with the rules we laid out. And even if they were both, you know, we had multiple licenses submitted on the same day at the end of the day, um, whichever one was submitted first is how we consider them in that order. And I think that, you know, this application being completed um, is obviously a plus. And I feel like I can make this vote with confidence just because that spot previously did have, you know, a liquor store and did have activity there. So I think that not only, you know, does this come without any type of strings attached from any building commissioner or, um, police or fire safety, um, but also I think that we as a community have also witnessed this particular site. So this is, regardless of other, other applicants, just in general, you know, when we speak about sites before approving a license, you know, I feel like, um, this is one especially where, location at least, um, you know, I feel confident making the motion to approve this license.
Okay, anybody else want to comment?
I would just add, I think, Phil, you bring up excellent points, um, that there, there's a history there. That we're rejuvenating our Main Street and to see, uh, a business, uh, a, a space being refilled again. Another business on Main Street, I think is a good, is a good thing for our community. So, um, I think, um, what's been laying out here is, is a good plan and we hope it comes to fruition from here. But I'm looking forward to supporting this.
Anybody else? I'd just like to, um, make one comment that, um, that we are really trying to have a system that, that's fair and accurate and that, and following the application process and the rules is very, very, very important. And it's certainly not done to penalize anybody, but it, um, is, is done in what's in the best interest of the town, the applicant and um, just the process in general. So I think this evening, if it showed us anything, even though I think we all could say we don't like some of the rules, um, I am a little troubled if, what if two people come into the door at the same time? Um, what happens then? Um, we flip coins? Is that what we, we come down to? But, um, but having said that, I just, liquor licenses, we take very, very seriously in the town of North Andover. And I think one thing this process did is, is show that. So that's my only comment on that. And so if there's nobody else with anything that they'd like to say, I'll take the vote. Okay, we'll hear the vote. Roll call, please.
Uh, Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, aye.
And Rosemary Smedelia, aye. It is a unanimous vote. The license is granted.
Thank you very much.
You're, you're very welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, as a result of that, unfortunately, the license has been granted and, um, so I believe we, unfortunately for the next applicant, um, I, I don't believe that we need to, to have a hearing. And other than to say that, uh, please stay in touch and if anything were to come forward, um, we would certainly consider your application. And it does change. Sometimes more often than, sometimes we're surprised. And as Phil said, if you really wanted to try to move forward and bring something before town meeting, that is also a possibility.
Right.
Is there anything else from anybody that would like to comment?
Can I, can I make a comment, please?
Yes, of course. You, you deserve that. Go ahead.
Had we had known prior that we were able to submit the application on the fourth, we would have done it. But we were misled by the town saying that the application is starting on the fifth. And I have it in writing.
Mr. Mr. D, uh, Mr. Dave, am I pronouncing that correctly?
It's actually David, but that's, that's.
No, I, I have a tough last name too. But I, I guess, I mean, an important point is that you weren't bounced by somebody who submitted an application on the fourth of the, application we just awarded was also, um, submitted on the fifth. And so it had nothing to do with the fact that you submitted it on.
No, I, 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 I agree that, you know, but if we had known, if we had told by the town that the application has been open for submission on the fourth, we were ready to go. We had it ready. We could have submitted on the.
And that's been the case that, that, that the prior applicant also said. I, I would, um, I just wanna make sure that we don't let, let this meeting though end without making clear that we have done this as a town before, where we've gone before town meeting and an individual like yourself, especially a resident, has submitted a request for.
No, but here comes the technical issue, right? I mean, I could have been in his spot. My application is complete. And because if I had submitted it on the fourth, I would have been next in line.
So you understand the gentleman who, who ended up getting the license also submitted his on the fifth, correct?
Yes.
So.
But I could have been prior to the, prior to the fifth, and I could have been.
That was his case though as well. They both.
No, I understand.
So there's nobody, there's nobody who submitted it on the fourth that got ahead of you.
I, well, how, how did they accept the application on the fourth then? That, that's what I'm saying. If, if they should have said the whole, I think it should have been a fair hearing for everybody. Everybody should have. Everybody should have known that, you know, applications would be accepted on the fourth and not on the fifth.
But even still on the, even, even still on the fifth, that first person, were they not somebody that we had considered at all? The gentleman we heard before you submitted their application at eight fifteen A M., which by the way, you could have done as well. You could have submitted at eight fourteen A M.
No, but we were told that, that the town wasn't accepting the applications till the fifth.
Indeed. And the gentleman who got the application did submit his on the fifth too, prior to you.
But, but had, if we had known that you guys are taking application on the fourth, we could have easily submitted it on the.
Just gonna hop in here for a minute. Everybody, everybody does have the right to appeal a decision that is made by the Board of Selectmen to the A B C C, sir. So if you want to do that, you'd be welcome to do that. If you want to give me a call tomorrow, just to talk about town meeting process or any other things, you're free to do that, or I can reach out to you in the morning as well. Uh, but I don't think we're going to get anywhere, um, having this discussion right now. Um, so I'll give you a call in the morning.
And have my objection.
I completely understand that and respect that. I'll give you a call first thing in the morning, about eight thirty, okay? All right. I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you very much.
So I think the next thing we need to do, Madam Chairwoman, is motion ourselves out of licensing.
Yes, I will entertain.
Now we close the Board of Licensing Commissioners and remove, move back into regular session.
Motion made. Did I get a sec? And who seconded that, please?
Oh, it's Laura.
Okay, thank you, Laura. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColigero, aye.
Chris Nobley, aye.
Richard Valencourt, yes.
And Rose Nice Medili, aye. We are now out of licensing, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we're now looking at governmental reports and did we miss the revision of the alcoholic beverages regulations?
That's on me, Mr. Chair. So we're actually going to move that to your next agenda to avoid confusion with the process. And so you'll see that again on your next agenda.
Okay, okay. Make sure. Okay, so we have our F Y twenty-two recommended budget report. So Melissa, all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If it pleased you, I am going to go ahead and share my screen so you can see the presentation. Thank you. All right, you can see that? Okay. Who wants to do that instead? Let's see. There we go. Okay. All right. So this is our fiscal year twenty-two town managers recommended budget. The first slide is our fiscal year twenty-two budget revenue. Uh, we are presenting a balanced budget within capacity as determined by our forecast exercises and any additional information that we've learned since then. That does include consideration of the advice of the Revenue and Fixed Cost Committee. The hundred and twelve million dollar number includes transfers to stabilization accounts and funding for capital using free cash, and it's a very comprehensive number. As you remember from our forecasting meeting, our local receipts are actually decreasing the share, which is unusual and really is what is hindering our budget growth. The budget as a whole can only increase by two point three percent from recurring revenue resources. This is basically a chart showing you what our different revenue sources are. Um, as you know, most of our budget is really funded through the tax levy, about seventy-four percent. Not unusual for a community like ours. Um, what makes us a little bit more unique is that we really have a lot of residential taxes. And so a lot of our budget really is built on the back of the residential tax base. The revenues for the fiscal year twenty-two budget total a hundred and eight million dollars. It's a two point three five percent increase in the last fiscal year. Again, that's not including the free cash that we're using for reserves and capital. You have to remember, um, that we do this kind of easy on in the, early on in the process. And so a lot of this is guessing and estimates, right? And so we won't know with much more clarity what our local aid, et cetera, would look like until much later in our process. Our property taxes are estimated to grow by three point six one percent, about two point nine million dollars. Uh, so that's proportion two and a half plus new growth of about eight hundred thousand dollars. Our local receipts are decreasing by three point five five percent, approximately four hundred thousand dollars. And we talked about that a lot in the revenue and fixed costs meeting, but you remember, we have things that have decreased this year, like interest and mail tax and passport revenue. Um, and so we're really seeing, probably for the first time, I have seen a decrease in local receipts. And our local aid per our policies and procedures is pretty much level funded, except for a small increase in unrestricted aid. You'll remember that we did not actually find out our local aid number until really late in the process this year because the town's, the state's budget wasn't passed until well into our fiscal year. This part shows our twenty twenty-two budget expenditures. And so this includes everything, our capital, our reserves, anything funded from one-time revenue, as well as any state assessments. Our total appropriation will be less than one percent increased due to decreased spending in reserves and capital. So last year, we actually transferred more from free cash to offset capital, and this year we're being a little less aggressive in that. This basically breaks down what our expenses look like for fiscal year twenty-two. I just want to point out, and I know I pointed this out last year too, when you see that forty-nine percent number for education, that's not really a true amount. Because they also are getting some of that green part, the employee benefits, the unclassified share costs, a portion of the debt, a portion of the capital and reserves, and a portion of support services. So, you know, it's really a much bigger pie. It's actually closer to a seventy percent when you pull everything out. Yes.
Melissa, just to run apples to apples comparison, is that typically in municipal finance, how most municipalities or municipalities in Massachusetts would present a pie chart like this? Would they take that those extra expenses, health insurance, et cetera, out of the education slice and represent it as separate?
So everywhere I've ever worked has shown it this way. Uh, what we do basically during, during the fiscal year is Lynn actually does a follow-up analysis, working with Jim Maile of what all of the costs are. Many communities call them chargebacks. Uh, we don't actually do chargebacks here, but what we do is we do a true accounting, and that's how we get to our per pupil expenditure. So when you talk about.
But I know a lot of, a lot of folks like to look at other communities too. And so, you know, this is one of those nuances that might be missed if you don't know to peel that next layer back.
Absolutely. Um, and if you think of something, you know, usually you don't keep clue debt or any capital in your per pupil expenditures, right? And, and Desi certainly doesn't do that, but you know, when you look at that number, it certainly brings the number much further up. So the fiscal year twenty-two budget includes increases of two point three five percent departmental spending from fiscal year twenty-one. Municipal departments are increasing by only point six percent. Support services are decreasing by negative three point four three percent. And the education budget is increasing by two point five percent. Everyone always wants to know the percentages, um, which is why I always include them. But, you know, in, in real money talk, um, the municipal bud, budget is only increasing by a hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars. Um, my first year in Sudbury, my budget increased by point nine, and I was really proud because we were having some funding issues that year. The point six, I don't know whether to be proud or a combination of proud and horrified. Um, but it's, you know, we, we knew this was going to be a tough year, um, fiscal year twenty-two. We've been saying it for the last ten months. Um, so I'm really proud of the work that the department has, have done in order to get us here because it was no small feat. Um, and I think that they should really be applauded for their diligence because everyone came in where I asked them to be, and this is a lot about the team that we have. The school budget is increasing by one point five million, and the support services budget is decreasing by sixty-six thousand, one hundred and nine dollars. A lot of that is because we're actually moving the community support coordinator to the police department's budget. During the quarantine, um, we actually moved her position to the police department and has worked really well. And she's really utilizing a lot of the police department's resources now, um, and it's been an excellent collaboration. And so we're, we're making that official through the budget. One thing I wanted to just update you on, because I think it really is very relevant to our budgeting this year, is where we are with CARES Act. So as you know, the CARES Act funding spending deadline was extended. However, at this time, we have seen no additional appropriations of funding. There is some rumors that we may see additional appropriations in March, um, but nothing has really been cemented down at this point. Now, before, it was supposed to end on December thirty-first, but it was kind of a race to make sure that we expended all the funds that we were awarded, and we have done that. Um, obviously, we know that COVID nineteen costs are continuing, and we anticipate as much as one point five million dollars in additional costs through this fiscal year, through June thirtieth. And that was something that we really contemplated in that M O U, right? We're going to use internal budget capacity, then we're going to go to the finance reserve, and then finally to our reserves in order to fund that one point five million dollar delta that we think we'll see in this fiscal year. We're also committed to COVID nineteen funding for fiscal year twenty-two as well, but we're, we are asking to do that through an appropriation at free cash at town meeting. The North Andover Public Schools anticipates that they'll need two point six million dollars for COVID necessities, as well as bridging the education gap. So as we all know, and as a mother myself, I can say that there certainly been issues, um, with our kids keeping up to date on where they should be in school. And right now, we are evaluating the students in North Andover, um, to see where they are and where they should be. They do anticipate that this about one point five million dollars of this money will be used for the education gap. If you take the schools increase from this year, the one point five million dollars, the two point five percent, plus this two point six million dollars, it ends up being a seven point four nine percent increase over fiscal year twenty-one. We're also going to be asking for a hundred and ten thousand dollars for public health. So that's for our public health nurses, as well as our public health inspector that we've added on due to COVID this year. You know, I don't like to use free cash for the budget, um, but this is an appropriate funding source for the COVID nineteen expenses because it's a useful one-time funding source for a one-time expenditure. There will be no increase to the base budget because this is not an increase to the levy. These are non-recurring costs. The use of free cash for recurring costs creates a structural deficit. And so if any of you were at the finance committee or watched it, you heard we used the groceries versus the window example. You don't want to use your credit card to buy groceries because eventually you're going to get to your limit. You're going to have no more credit to buy the groceries, and you're also not going to have any cash in your checking account either, right? And that's a problem. It creates a structural deficit in your home budget. You do buy windows using credit or by taking the loan, right? Because you're going to pay that off before you're going to need to buy windows again. Windows are not a recurring cost. And so that's why it is appropriate in this instance to use free cash for our COVID nineteen expenses. This is just a chart showing how we did spend that money this year. Um, you can see that we had two point seven million dollars, a little bit more. The schools spent about two point one million. The town spent about seven hundred and eighteen thousand. We have some things we think are going to be reimbursed by FEMA. If you ever put in a FEMA application, there, it takes about two years to see that money. We have heard that FEMA is now going to be reimbursing for vaccine costs as well, which is huge if we get kept vaccine to give. Um, and so, you know, that's, that's a positive as well, but we are at this point out of our CARES Act funding. Next thing I want to talk about just a little bit is health insurance. Um, so if you remember correctly, the town joined the G I C back in twenty fourteen. At that time, we were self-insured and our health insurance budget was about eleven million dollars, eleven million ninety-one thousand. In fiscal year twenty-two, eight years later, the recommended health insurance budget is eleven point three million dollars. So as you can see, the G I C has really been a benefit to the town's budget. Our health insurance breakdown is roughly about half employee health insurance for the schools, both about five million, five point five million, and then the remaining half is three hundred, three million dollars for retirees and two million dollars for town employees. We do anticipate about a six percent increase in our costs this year. Um, I am a, one of the commissioners for the G I C. Uh, we have a meeting on Thursday, and I'm hoping we'll have a little bit more information at that meeting, but right now we're estimating a six percent. This is a chart that shows the town staffing since fiscal year seventeen. Um, and so, you know, I'm going to show you in a minute that we are reducing staff this year in order to get the budget to where we need it to be. For fiscal year twenty-one, we had two hundred and eleven point nine seven full-time employees. We're going to have two hundred and ten point seven seven full-time employees for fiscal year twenty-two. I, when I did this presentation, I looked back at last year's and I had three pages of highlights and changes. Um, this year I don't, we really slimmed down as much as we could. So one thing we are doing is we're moving postage to one budget for efficiency purposes. Uh, what we were doing before was basically billing each department for their postage, creating work for our accounting department, and we're trying to move away from that and really streamline as much as we can. We are able to fund the finance committee reserve again and keep it funded at the one point five million dollars. So if you remember, we created that last year and we used surplus money that was being held in our health insurance as kind of a cushion. Um, and to be more transparent, we've inserted in the finance committee reserve last year, and we're continuing to do that. We have two employee reductions, there's a point two in the community development office, um, and that is the new housing person that we introduced in this year's budget. Um, unfortunately, we, we did not fill that due to the hiring freeze we put on due to COVID, and we are not going to fill that. What we are going to do, and what we have done, is put a C P C application in that would achieve that same goal. And so I'm hopeful that we'll see that goal met through that process instead, and we are reducing one full-time employee in the town clerk's office. This is not resulting in any layoffs. These positions are already vacant. We have moved the community support coordinator to the police department. We've continued to fund our salary reserves for our unsettled collective bargaining agreements because the last thing you want to have happen is you settle in the middle of the fiscal year and you can't afford to pay the contract. And so we've made sure to do that. And our COLAs were bargained at one point five percent for this fiscal year, which was a godsend, um, and making this budget work.
Melissa, the movement of the community support coordinator, you know, when, again, when you're diving into the budget and looking for these departments, that's where you'll notice a change. But as far as the bottom line goes, there's no impact.
No.
The postage, for instance, so it's just, so your budget, our budget this year, for anyone who follows it word for word, will look a little bit different than prior year.
It will.
But bottom line wise, these aren't positions or departments that have been eliminated. You've just moved things around so there's more transparency.
That's correct. Yes. We are.
I'm sorry, I have a question too. You, I think you said, I think you said that you were going to fund that point two per, point two percent through community development office through C P C. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. So that person was going to do. It is. So that person was, um, it's actually how I funded it in Sudbury. Um, so yes, because that person's working on affordable housing, it certainly can be funded in that way. I actually kind of changed it a little bit to the, the application is more about looking directly at our housing needs right now in our stock, but also looking into joining a regional housing, um, division, which would be much more affordable for the town and really give us a lot more resources. The closest one to us right now is Reading, and so we'll be starting to have conversations with them or with some of our other closer communities, uh, but whether or not they'd be interested in starting an office together. But yes, that's, that's the plan this year.
But that requires C P C approval year over year, right?
It does. Yes.
Okay.
It does.
Thank you.
Um, so we are going to be doing some appropriations to reserves and some other transfers. So this is assuming that there's no capacity within the budget to absorb any of these deficits. And we're just not at a point yet where we know that. But, so this is kind of our worst-case scenario, um, free cash. But our free cash was certified for this fiscal year at ten mil, ten point eight million dollars. We will have a special within the annual where we'll be making some fiscal year twenty-one proposed transfers. The three hundred thousand dollars to the Stevens estate is if we do not have retained earnings to offset any deficits that exist. So we'd go, we do have a, a spending freeze on. We would go to retained earnings first to offset anything and payback stabilization and then to free cash. This year, we do know that there's going to be both seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in schools COVID expenses that we need to fund either from within the operating budget, from the reserves or from free cash. And so we have this noted there as well. Same thing with the town, but a hundred thousand dollars in COVID expenses that need to be offset. The real hope is that we'll be able to absorb these somewhere within the budget. Depends how snow and ice goes. Not looking so good this week, um, but we'll continue to be diligent on that.
Melissa, just that, can, I don't want us to lose track of that. So the Stevens, actually I interrupted you. Do you want to finish the?
No, go right ahead. No, go, go, go.
So the Stevens estate is three hundred thousand dollars. We'll touch retained earnings first before going to that three hundred thousand, which is from the stabilization fund?
Right. So we don't, so it'll be to pay back the stabilization. So we have not, we've, we've approved up to three hundred thousand dollars to be transferred from stabilization to Stevens estate revenues. We won't actually make that transfer until we know what we need, right? And so right now, we have the hiring freeze on. We have one employee still working five hours there, um, a week. We're watching it very closely. Do I, I don't think right now we'll need the entire three hundred thousand dollars, but we'll need something, right? And so first we'll go to the retained earnings, we'll offset with the retained earnings, but then we're going to want to pay stabilization back. We want to bring it back up to the five percent goal that we have. And so we'll use some amount up to three hundred thousand dollars to achieve that.
Meaning, you're talking about the five percent goal in our general stabilization account, not?
Yes.
And so this, the hope would be that the Stevens estate does end up paying that sum back, whatever money we do have to give towards them.
We would try to pay back first, yes, and then we would go to free cash to make up the rest. That's what I would recommend.
Meaning free cash to transfer back into stabilization?
Yes.
So effectively, free cash would be subsidizing the transfer to the Stevens estate.
Correct.
And.
Hopefully it's going to come to that, but.
But down, should that play out, we would still down the road expect the Stevens estate to reimburse the town for that, correct?
I guess it would depend on what revenues come in. Um, I'm hoping that we won't be in a situation where it's above, it's, where we have to go to the stabilization. I'm hoping that we won't be in a situation where it's above, it's where we have to go to the stabilization account, but we're still watching it very closely at this point.
And so it's possible we could, but we're dipping in only for five thousand dollars or ten thousand dollars to cover whatever that gap is. And so.
It's possible.
We're looking at going up to three hundred thousand, but at this point, that's not looking likely.
Yes, I don't, I do not think we'll be up to the three hundred thousand point, no.
Do you have a rough idea, looking at the numbers, what that will end up, you think being?
So right now, hold on a second. Right now, we have a deficit of about ninety thousand dollars. Lynn Hoppen, if I'm misspeaking, I have the file over here, but I'm talking from the top of my head right now, of about ninety thousand dollars. If we didn't have the deficit grow any bigger, we would be able to pay it out of retained earnings, because we have gotten some revenue in this year. But remember that anything that is a deposit now needs to go to the fiscal year of the time that it's in, so that's affected the revenues. I may get into this a little bit more on my, I have a page coming up where I talk about the Stevens estate. So it may make sense for me to run through it and then kind of continue the conversation there if that works for you.
That works for me.
Okay. Yes.
Madam Town Manager, but my understanding that there are quite a few other bookings, I know that they're just deposits. We'll discuss that at that time that are up.
Yes, I will. Yep. And then we're going to, that's no problem. Then we have the following fiscal year twenty-two proposed state transfer. So we have our regular stabilization account to bring it to the five percent. That's a hundred and forty thousand. We're actually asking to do a little bit more into the capital stabilization account than is required. We'd like to save three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The reason for doing that is that we know we have some large capital projects coming up, and it would be good to have some bucket of money in that stabilization account to be able to use for design and for other things that come up. So we're asking, well, we have free cash now to make that transfer. We have four million dollars that we're advocating should be funded for CIP through free cash. We have these two things I spoke about during my last slide, which is the schools COVID expenses of two point six million dollars and the health department's COVID expenses of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. If all of this went through, all of these worst case scenario transfers went through, at the end of town meeting, we would have two point four million dollars in free cash left. But I do want to note that we do anticipate getting the Amazon permit payment sometime in this fiscal year, April's timeframe. And so that would replenish our free cash for next town meeting, and that is about five to six million dollars. So while we will be spending free cash down, we will be bringing it back up to a manageable amount.
Can I, for, from a financial standpoint, why wouldn't we take that balance? I mean, two point three, two point four million dollars as a balance after all those expenses still seems like it's pretty sizable. Why wouldn't we be taking all of that and putting it into CIP, for instance, since we can't use it for operating costs anyways, or shouldn't use it for operating costs?
So we don't have enough CIP costs for projects this year to fill up that amount of money. Also, if you, so interestingly, bond council and our rating agencies actually look at our free cash reserve when they are doing our ratings, and so they're going to want to see that we didn't spend it all the way down. It's interesting, because a lot of the time we look at free cash kind of as the, the town savings account and not so much like a, a reserve or CD, you know, if you're thinking about it in your own type of banking. But they actually do look at our balances in the free cash when they're doing our bond rating, and so we, we do want to keep a cushion there. So the next.
Plus, wouldn't, wouldn't it also be fair to say that you also want to have some liquidity? Because if disaster hits in some way, it gives us latitude of making some choices that maybe don't impact certain services or scope of services. I mean, that's like having a cushion for anything.
It's absolutely true.
Right?
That's absolutely true. And if, if you, you know, look and you think about it really, one of the conversations that Lynn and I have been having is, you know, looking back at our last recession, at our two thousand eight, two thousand nine point, where we actually had negative free cash. You know, the fact that we've built up to the point that we have is, is pretty impressive when you think of it only being ten to twelve years ago that our free cash was negative. You know, and that can happen very easily, right? Because in your inner session and your revenue still coming where you think they're going to be, if you're running a deficit, DOR will basically take your free cash back, right? So we want to make sure that we, we do have a cushion there, just, just in case. So I'm just going to run quickly through the enterprise fund budgets. So we'll start with the sewer. The sewer enterprise fund budget is increasing by three hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. The majority of this increase is due to expected increases in the assessment from the sanitary district. Our sewer rates are forecasted to remain the same this year. It would be the tenth consecutive year. But I do want to remind people that our rate create increase could be necessary in future years if that assessment continues to increase in this manner. Our retained earnings currently in the sewer enterprise fund budget are five point two million dollars.
So I have a stupid question about the sewer piece, but we've added housing over the past ten years. So how is it that we've not needed to, like, what is the mechanism behind it? Where, because I mean, we don't just raise money just to pocket those, those increases and put, you know, squirrel it away. So why, why wouldn't there, why is it I should say that, you know, a decade's worth of growth hasn't impacted, you know, what we would have to be paying? And I'm, I'm completely fine with no rates going up. I just want to understand why.
So if you think about it this way, right, you actually, more rate payers is to the benefit of the residents, because more people are taking on the burden. So you're right, our growth as a town has in some way kept your rate rather level. Because while you do have more people come on and while there is more sewer going through, that increase is being sent to more people, right? And so additionally, at some point, our rates may have been higher than what our costs were.
Okay. And then, so any potential increases would be due to, to just operating costs from the GLSD staff?
Assessment.
Okay.
Staff. Yep. And then for our water enterprise budget, that budget is set to increase by two hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. Again, they're forecasted to remain the same for the tenth year. We will be continuing our hydrant flushing program, which was a new addition last year, and I'm happy that we're able to continue doing it. If you remember correctly, it was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and we were doing about a quarter of the, of the hydrants. So we're, we're looking forward to continuing that. I will add that both the water and sewer enterprise funds do have reserves in them for our contracts that are unsettled as well. And so that is taken into account in these increases. And they retain earnings is about four million dollars for that, but comes. Okay, so the Stevens estate enterprise fund budget. It was a difficult year for the Stevens estate due to COVID, right? I mean, they couldn't have events, or if they could have events, they were very limited events. And so it certainly has been difficult. And I think that I would be remiss not to recognize that Joanna has been so creative and resilient, and I'm very proud of the work that she's accomplished this year. But at the end of the day, it's a function hall and we weren't allowed to have functions, and so that was hard. So we have seventy thousand dollars come in in revenues in this fiscal year. Due to the new DOR ruling, about thirty thousand of that are deposits for future events and will need to be credited in future years, which brings the revenue for fiscal year twenty-one through two four down to about the forty-one thousand dollar point. We have had expenses of a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars year to date. We do still have that spending freeze in place, and the current deficit is ninety-six thousand nine hundred and eight dollars. So I'm sure more revenues are going to come in in the spring when we open back up and we're able to have events again. We still have twelve events slated for fiscal year twenty-one. And so that certainly will bring that, that revenue piece up. But if we were stuck today where we are, our retained earnings would, would be diminished to twenty-eight hundred dollars. And as you know, DOR did require stabilization transfers due to our lack of revenues. I, I will add that I have a meeting with DOR tomorrow about their analysis of the Stevens estate finances, and I anticipate that that report will be able to be released next week. And so, you know, that will, will be great to have as we continue the budget process. So I did send a memo to you all, as well as the trustees in the finance committee last week, kind of explaining that I was taking this rather unorthodox approach. What I did was I asked the director to prepare a best case and worst case scenario of where we would be next year. The worst case is obviously limited events, limited in size due to COVID. Based on the vaccine rollout and the current restrictions in place, I decided to create a four-month budget using the worst case scenario numbers. I recognize that we just can't end up in the same place again next year with DOR not approving our tax rate. Our ability to make that stabilization transfer was only because of COVID, because they passed the municipal act. And I don't anticipate that that will continue forever. And so that worst case scenario budget assumed a capacity cap of fifty. Right now, it's currently twenty-five outside. In essence, I took the worst case scenario revenues divided by twelve and multiplied by four. And that would bring us to a fall town meeting where we can make additional appropriations based on more current information. And that would be prior to setting the tax rate if that meeting occurred in September or October. You know, and this may be moot, because we have the RFP L right now. We had a site visit today, and we may have a successful process. I feel confident and excited about it. And then we wouldn't need to take much action on this budget at all. But I know this is, is different than what we've ever seen or ever done, but I do think it is the most prudent way to address the Stevens estate budget at this point. I'm sure this conversation about this, I'm happy to talk about that if you want to talk about it now and then continue on with the rest of my presentation. It's up to you, Mr. Chair, on how you want to proceed.
Well, let's just take a minute to see if we can kind of punch it out if there's any, any questions on this.
I don't have a, I don't have a question, but I have a comment. It kind of fits in with what we're talking about, but not totally. But the Stevens estate at Osgood Hill won the gold award for the Reader's Choice Award Gold for the best wedding venue in our whole region, beating, beating out a place at Endicott College and Castle Hill, the Crane Estate. So I only say this in suggesting that there is still hope for, as the town manager has said, that it won't be as dire as we think. It was hopefully with the vaccines and everything else that hopefully we do have some more solid revenues coming through. So again, it's not entirely tied to the budget, but I think it gives us hope that maybe we'll have a, a more positive story to tell in the next several months. So that's it. We need to put that in, in a big, bold something on our literature and get the word out. I mean.
I know Joanna's looking at a press release.
Oh, great. Fantastic.
Certainly will. I was very excited to see that today. And I will add, I mean, we do have eighteen events scheduled for fiscal year twenty-two, which is great, you know, and I looked at, in order to make this worst case revenue, we, you know, we looked at the events that occurred up to October in order to make this determination.
Just so I'm clear on this all, but at, at the end of the day, since we're talking about the budget, the reality is we have to prepare a budget that would cover, I'll put that in kind of air quotes, a gap in, in, in funding so that our budget is structurally sound next year. So we've committed three hundred thousand in one way or another, either from revenue or stabilization fund in order to continue to operate the Stevens estate. That, is that fair to say?
During this fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes. So during next fiscal year, where our, what we're basically proposing is to put forward a four-month budget and then either go to a tall fall town meeting that would be scheduled by us rather than our, being forced to one by DOR or not require the budget because we have the RFP.
Good.
Madam Town Manager, just a question about the Stevens estate and COVID expenses. Obviously, there's a lot of function facilities that are affected by COVID. Because the Stevens estate falls under the town, were they, were they, were we unable to capitalize on some COVID relief because of that? Because it's not a private entity?
Right. They fell in like a funny spot where they were not able to apply for any of the business relief, unfortunately. And so it, it's, it's been, it's been tough.
It's tough. I, I just wanted to, it's a, it's a tough spot. It's the tough spot for the town to be in, you know? And I, I was unsure, and I just want to clarify. Thank you.
And in that case, any relief that we would have redirected to them would have been coming out of the pockets of, like the public schools, for instance.
Yes, we would have had to use CARES Act funding.
And we did not use any CARES Act funding at any point, correct?
Lynn, can you confirm with me whether or not we ended up reimbursing any of the CARES Act funding for the Stevens estate? I can't remember. I know we talked about it.
Yeah, we did not. There were, there, there was minimal expenses that, because they were rarely doing any functions at the time, so.
And we had a lot of conversation whether or not CARES Act funding was appropriate for enterprise funds. And I know Lynn worked hard to get priority on that from DOR as well.
And they, and they did say that it wasn't appropriate for enterprise funds to use CARES Act. It was more for the town and, and education.
But, but what about our other enterprise funds? Would they have allowed it for that?
Nope. We did not use any of the CARES Act money for water or sewer either.
That seems very strange. That's one of the most important things in the town is water and sewer, but wow.
It does, that does raise a good question. Did we see, I don't recall from that slide, did either of those accounts, were they impacted one way or another by, by COVID, or were those pretty, like almost self-containing? That's.
Yeah, if you remember correctly.
About them, I feel like that, that must, that's a good, known as is good news.
Yeah. If you remember correctly, when Lynn presented the revenues last meeting, year-to-date revenues, she did say that they are right in line with where they should be. Which is interesting. You'd think you'd have, actually have more water use with everybody at home, but we didn't see that. Okay. Is there anything else in the Stevens estate before I move on?
Thank you.
Okay. And then I just wanted to touch a little bit on facilities master plan two, because it's certainly a hot topic. And as you know, I did go to the school committee meeting, as well as the finance committee meeting last week. So I, I am, and our team is actively working with Superintendent Gilligan towards completion of facilities master plan two. I think it's really important to recognize that when you do capital needs, they will come with operational impacts that need to be addressed, right? So if you have additional classroom space, you don't only need the teachers to occupy that space, but there's increased janitorial staff, utility costs, benefits, and those are things that all need to come together when we talk about the facilities master plan. So I'm very excited to continue through the process with the school department, and we look forward to introducing the plan at May twenty twenty-two town meeting. Like you, I have seen the schools preliminary visioning that they've done with their five-year and seven-year plan that increases the budget by four point five percent each year moving forward. That just accounts for staffing needs, right? It doesn't talk about health insurance. It doesn't talk about all of these other costs that go along with, with their plan. And I just want to be really clear that the four point five percent, these bigger projects, this vision that we're bringing forward, well, really exciting and I think needed and important to the community. It cannot be achieved within the constraints of proposition two and a half. It is going to require either an override or some other large new revenue source. And I just want to be really clear about that, because I think that we've kind of danced around it a lot. And I just want people to know that, well, we, we are diligently planning. We are setting the table at this point for a need for an override in the future. The other thing I just wanted to address is I know there's, there's been a lot of conversation about leaving money on the table and, and Lynn and I underestimating our revenues. And I just want to address that, because it's, it's, it's not true for our fiscal year twenty-one budget. And you can see, actually right here, this is the LA five, this is the form that we have to submit to the Department of Revenue. And for fiscal year twenty-one, our levy capacity, our excess levy capacity is actually only a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. It's about one point one percent. It's very close. So I just wanted to explain that to people, you know, I, I anticipate the same thing for this year, because we're pushing this year too. You know, we're doing a really good job of trying to capture new growth. We're having extensive meetings to talk about that, and it's been really beneficial to the budget process. But we are not leaving any levy capacity on the table. And then finally, I just want to thank everybody. I know I said this at the beginning. It's been a trying year, not just the budget, but just generally, but this team makes it seem really easy. And that's a blessing, and we're really lucky to have the department heads that we have. So I just wanted to say thank you to them, and they're all here to answer any questions that you might have. So, you know, we're happy to answer anything that you might have now, or if you want us to come back later. We're happy to do that as well, once you've had time to absorb a little more.
In the, in the prior slide, Melissa, when you had shown that our levy limit is just about at a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars.
The capacity.
The, yeah. So that is a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars that we are technically leaving on the table. Why is there a philosophy behind why we wouldn't go to that amount beyond us not wanting to pay? I mean, taxpayers would then have to pay, of course, that. But distributed over, you know, the property, you know, taxpayers in North Andover, I mean, that's a relatively negligible amount. So why wouldn't we be going all the way to, to zero?
So you're really not likely ever going to see a zero, because figuring out the revenues is a little bit of a game, right? We're estimating at this point based on, and we're, we're taking great estimates based on data. We're estimating at this point based on, and we're, we're taking great estimates based on data, right? But you may have something that you underestimate and something that you overestimate. So for instance, you know, we, we typically level funds uh, locally because their process is so much later than our process, and it's really difficult to estimate on what they might do. The governor's budget may look nothing like what the House and Senate budget ends up looking like. And so, you know, we have to do our best to estimate based on historical data. So we look back five years on most of our items. This year is a little bit of anomaly because we couldn't look back five years. Because if we look back five years at mail tax, we would have way undersold the mail tax. And so you're never going to see a zero. The hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar number, one percent, is is as close as I would ever be comfortable being. Um, because all it would take is one thing not coming to fruition for you not to be able to certify your taxes.
So close. I, okay. You just referenced something, though, that it's it's more not just related to the slide. Um, you know, we had an economic situation a decade ago that obviously you weren't our town manager. Um, most of us weren't on the select board. Um, and it was a little bit different, right? You know, a decade ago, you know, the economy, they weren't necessarily winners and losers. It felt like everybody was losing the stock market tank. This is a little different. You know, we're seeing a robust stock market still, but you know, we're seeing revenues really on shaky ground. How? How does this compare philosophically to then? I don't know if if maybe even then you you feel like you could weigh in more, but I mean, are we, are, what are we doing that's the same that we felt like worked? Because I think we weathered that storm really well, especially when we utilized our uh, um, this, that, that stimulus funding. Um, and what are we doing that's different? And why is it different?
Yeah, my first year in government was two thousand eight. Um, and so, you know, this budget process actually felt a lot like that budget process to me. You know, trying to figure out what you can cut without cutting services, trying to prepare reduced, what really end up being reduced service budgets, right? Because we're not even getting to where we should be to sustain services, unfortunately. Um, and so it felt like a lot of that. I think one of the things that that we've done really well, um, in my opinion, and I would love for Lynn to to jump in because I think she's been here nineteen years, so she's weathered it as well here. Um, is that we did a really good job of building our reserves. We created financial policies and we stuck to them even when it was hard, right? Um, and that's one of the reasons why our bond rating is so good is because people have looked at us and said, wow, they, they set these policies in place. And there was lots of times that it would have been easy not to follow them, and we did. Um, I think the one thing that is interesting about this recession compared to the two thousand eight recession is that we have an end in sight, right? We, we can kind of quantify when this will be over in a different way than we could then when really we were seeing everything crash. And we're also not seeing values decrease yet, um, which has been really interesting. Lynn, do you want to weigh in at all?
Sure. Um, I'd just like to reiterate what Melissa is saying. I mean, we've, we've also, not only did we put the policies in place and follow them, we also are very conservative on our revenue projections. Because if, as I've always said in the years that I've been here, if we, if we budget revenues that are not conservative and they don't come to fruition, it creates a bigger problem that a recession has because you can't make it up. I mean, and then you go into a next budget year, you didn't meet the the previous year's budgeted revenues, and now you're already starting behind the eight ball, and you've got to make up that difference somewhere. So you've either hired people because you brought in a higher revenue or you've projected a higher revenue, and now you've got to let them go. So I mean, we have been very consistent in in my tenure here anyway um, to follow that path and 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 build the reserves and and hope and keep us going in that path and not go backwards because the minute you go out beyond those boundaries is when you start getting yourself into trouble. You got to take it slow.
Thank you, Lynn.
You know, having worked with Lynn for.
Go ahead, Rosemary. I'll wait.
Um, having worked with Lynn for so many of those years, again, starting with the finance committee, and she's absolutely right. We can't say that any stronger than you could even imagine. It's really what keeps the town stable, and it, it's the best way to build up your reserve is by being conservative. And every document, every bit of literature that you get on proper financing for for municipalities tells you the same thing. Um, and and as a result, it was long and hard, those early years, long and hard. Um, but it has paid off, and thank goodness we did it because it's paid off right now as we and so many other communities are in trouble, but we're in much better shape than many of the other communities um, because of it. And um, I hope nobody loses track of that. Frankly, it's really what everyone should do about even their home budgeting, everything. You've just, you, you've got to be conservative, and that's how you, that, that's how you stay stable. That's how you don't get yourself into trouble, whether it be a town or a family. But again, she's absolutely right, and because of the way she's been doing this for years, it certainly has helped. Um, we're reaping the rewards during the tough times because of it. Go ahead, Dick.
Okay. Thank you, Rosemary. Uh, I just want to say thank you to Melissa and Lynn for, again, bringing us a balanced and structurally sound budget. Um, it's really always a great pleasure to uh, to hear the budget presentation and and know that we are in good hands. And I also want to thank all the department heads on the, on the call tonight for coming together and and working through these difficult times and and, you know, making the sacrifices you have to make and 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 really putting the uh, the, the sharpened pencils to paper and and bringing us as far as we've come. So I just really want to thank you all, and I think it's a, you know, I just got the budget book today, uh, this afternoon, so I can't wait to dive into it in more detail, but I think the presentation was great. And again, thank you all for everything that you do for the town. It's really, um, you know, phenomenal how, how much you guys do and how much the town benefits from your um, your work. So thank you.
Yeah, the book, the book was really put out beautifully this year. I mean, it's other years as well, but it really, it looks great. Uh, thanks to Berta Deck for some of the wonderful photos, but it's, no, it's easy to read. It's, it's, it's great.
Melissa, somebody from the public wanted to access that book. I know that, you know, we have a hard copy, but do we have an easy way that we can direct folks who want to dive into it online?
Right now, it is linked to the agenda. Um, tomorrow Lynn will load it up to the fiscal year twenty-two budget site. Uh, you can already find some documents there, but I don't think she loaded the budget yet. It is linked to the agenda, and we'll also put my presentation on there tomorrow as well.
Oh, excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, Melissa, I have not put it there. I, I can put it there in the first thing in the morning.
Perfect. Thank you. But it is linked to the agenda. Anyone who wants the agenda will be able to click right on it.
I think the only other thing that I I'd add is, and obviously tremendous work and all the department heads here, but we, you know, we've had a lot of focus about uh, budgeting and revenues. But in reality, we're, the manifestation of this is the services. And if you look at the scope of services that we're offering this fiscal year and what we want to offer next fiscal year, that I think is also a very important part of the story and how we got here, which is we've made some very specific choices as to what our priorities are, how we want to deliver those. And that's, I think, really important because some of it is about trying to do it the most cost-effective. Some of it is about getting the best value for what we're investing in. And again, you know, a simple thing like our community services coordinator, what we get out of that, the ripple effect, looking at things such as, you know, why we're pursuing being a green community. Those are not just dollars, but it's the scope of services. So as people look through this, I hope um, there's an understanding of that part two, that, you know, the scope of what we're really trying to to bring and continue to bring, you know, with with the town. And I just, I just, it's, it's very impressive. And uh, you know, we hope it comes to fruition as, as laying out.
Uh, Madam Town Manager, I just wanted to follow up to that, you know, first time through this process, the um, budget presentation, the way you lay it out, it's easy to follow. Um, and I also think, and you can, and you might be able to answer this too. I think your commitment to the schools should be commended. Um, I don't know how many other communities have the forethought to put recovery services in. Um, you know, as a mom with two little ones, of what you can see it, you know, they're going to need some. And it's not just the reading, it's going to be emotional, um, social emotional help that they're going to need. So um, I, again, I don't know how many other towns have the ability either to commit that money. Um, because I know that there are many communities facing layoffs right now. Um, and we're really just not filling positions. Um, is, is really, um, really a big, big deal. Um, not filling positions that are already vacant. So I think that that needs to be commended as well. So I um, I appreciate all your hard work, and I look forward to getting deeper into the budget and learning more. So thank you.
Thank you. I know the first one can be really confusing, so don't hesitate to reach out with any questions. We're all still learning, so.
Anything else on the budget before we take this as our, our homework for the next two weeks? All right. Thanks again, Melissa, and and all department heads. Tremendous. Which now brings us to the other, the other thing that's on our brains all the time. Beyond the budget, it's the COVID nineteen update. So how are we?
Well, I see Brian. I will let all my department heads except for Brian and Suzanne go home. Um, and Dean Laurie, sorry, Dean Laurie, but you're stuck with me. Uh, but everybody else.
Yeah. Thank you.
Um, and Brian is here with us to give us another update.
Take care, everyone. So thanks for having me again. Good to see everybody. Um, since the last time we talked, a couple of weeks ago, things are still trending downward, which is really good. Um, our local numbers have come down. Um, daily cases are between five and fifteen. Yesterday, we only had three, which I kind of attribute that to the snowstorm, people not getting out, which is a good thing. Um, our active cases in town is down to ninety-four, which is the lowest it's been in months, which is a really good sign. Um, and there are some at higher education that have, they're coming back. So their numbers are starting to creep up a little bit, but we've been in constant contact with them too, which is really good. Um, our testing rate is at two point nine percent, as is the state's. Uh, the state's numbers have been coming down as well. Um, three thousand a day is typical. Yesterday was only twelve hundred, obviously from the snowstorm. Hospizations are down to about thirteen hundred, which is the lowest it's been in several months as well. Uh, last time we spoke, we were beginning phase two, which is the seventy-five and over group. We talked about some of the challenges with this particular population and getting them to the clinics and getting them signed up. Um, we did actually start a list. We've been reaching out to residents seventy-five and over. Uh, Melissa has um, incorporated the entire town staff to help us reach out and make phone calls and maintain this database. Um, obviously, our limited numbers of doses that we're getting every week will be targeted towards the most highly susceptible populations. Um, we actually did schedule four clinics this week for first responders for their second doses. So we're wrapping up the end of phase one, which is really good. So everything's going to be contributed to phase two moving forward at this point. Um, we did do two hundred and seventy vaccinations at the long-term care facility at the end of last week to help that population in the beginning of phase two get off the ground with them. The other facilities that we have in town here are working with the Federal Pharmacy Protection Program to get them taken care of as well. I do have some calls out, and I've been working with the Housing Authority. They're on our radar to get them up and running with a clinic for the senior housing. They have been moved to, they're still in phase two, but they have population ages that range from, you know, the mid-fifties to seventy-five and eighty-five plus. So they've been targeted to do, once the second group is opened in phase two. So once we get the sixty-five and over group, we can start doing senior housing. Um, so we're in the process of scheduling that stuff now, which is really good. Um, also reaching out to seniors, and the list has been going very well, slower than I anticipated, but there's a lot of work that goes into it. Um, we do actually have on our radar a seventy-five and over clinic scheduled for town residents. So we will be actually using that list in the very near future to make phone calls and help people schedule a local in-town clinic. The details haven't been released. We're still working on those right now, but as soon as we finalize that, we will get that out there. I think any channel we can get it out there for publicity and to get people to sign up if we don't fill up the first hundred spots right away through our list. I think obviously the senior center, uh, Facebook, websites, uh, phone calls, things like that will help us get that taken care of. Um, the mega site has been going really well from what I hear. Uh, me and my companions in the local health departments in the area are actually this week going to be doing a um, a video. We got one of the local uh, TV stations down there to help us with, they're going to have a drone, they're going to do a flyby to show where you park, where you enter, and then we're going to go through all the health directors in the area, going to answer questions. Now, the pre-scripted questions to get the right information out, answer the questions that most people will have, and hoping to get that on NAcam and on Facebook and the website to help people be able to navigate the mega site. The closest one to us is um, the Danvers Doubletree Hilton. And then um, Lawrence General is still up and running as well, which is really good. The appointment slots have been full. Um, they say they're going to be adding more on. I check every day, a couple of times a day. I haven't seen uh, large slots of appointments being booked up yet, but hopefully those come soon. Um, I think as we are trending down and the vaccinations are trending up, we're going to get to a good spot. Uh, hopefully there's a light at the end of the tunnel, and we can kind of move forward. So I'm here to answer any questions and kind of go from there.
We do have a postcard as well. It actually was mailed tonight at five o'clock by Laurie. Uh, so the postcard um, will be hitting, it's going to residents seventy-five and over, um, giving them a phone number to call us if they need assistance in getting on a list or assistance in scheduling an appointment since they don't have computers. And I don't think Brian mentioned this. I might have missed it, but um, the governor also announced a two-on-one number. So if you are a senior at home or um, someone who is in phase one, because there are still phase one people out there that have not been vaccinated yet, um, who do not have access to a computer, you actually can call two-one-one. Um, and you will be directed to the state, um, and they will help you with scheduling as well. So there is additional resources available. We did hear today from somebody um, who's took their mother to Danvers today that they are making your follow-up appointment while you're there as well, which I think is a big relief for a lot of people because there's a lot of anxiety around how we get that second appointment and what will happen if you, you know, that's not available. And so that um, was clarified today as well, which I think is great. And I, I'll say, you know, everybody's rallied. Uh, we've got people from the youth center, um, the Stevens Estate, the Charon Clerk's office, everybody making phone calls, the library, everybody's making phone calls. Um, you know, Chief McCarthy and Jeff have been taking calls on there. Me and Laurie have been trying to track people down. Um, and a lot of the reason it's taken so long is we're a chatty group, they're a chatty group. But we've made a lot of new friends in the process, and I think people are really appreciating it.
Melissa, one thing that you brought up that's uh, that I've been hearing about, reading about is that getting that second appointment scheduled at the time you're getting your first vaccination helps with follow-through, compliance, confusion. That, that's a really important message, and like, while you're there, set up number two.
Right. We were saying, um, don't leave without it, right? Don't leave without that appointment. And a lot of that's being a self-advocate, and you know, that, that's hard for all of us, right? So um, you know, we have, we have been having a lot of people who've been having their, their children call us um, to, to help with the appointments as well, and we're encouraging people to do that so that we can walk them through the process of setting appointments up online too. So it's been really positive.
The last couple of clinics we've held, um, we have actually told people we're going to have the next clinic for your second dose on X date. They will receive a phone call or an email from us through our uh, software that we use to track all of the doses and to submit to the state that they're completed. Um, so we are actually booking their second appointment as they walk through and get their first shot. So that's actually really good.
Awesome. Fantastic. So uh, any other questions for Brian before we give him a, give him a break for the evening? Well, thank you again, Brian. Really appreciate all the work you and the, the team does, so.
Thank you very much, and I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
You got it. You got it.
Right. Bye.
I know. Okay, we're on to new business and uh, something that when it was nice and sunny out, we were all outside, socially distanced, we uh, made a decision on um, way back in June. And that's um, our vote to sign the Community Partnership Agreement with Amazon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Suzanne, I believe is still here as well. She is. Okay, so what we're doing right now, uh, is if you remember correctly, we did vote. Uh, way back when, feels like decades ago, um, to sign the term sheet. Um, which basically is just being memorialized in the final agreement. Uh, we're really excited about that. And so that's the first piece of business. And Suzanne was really so helpful and active and Andrew, um, in negotiating that agreement, um, and getting it to where it is now. Um, we should be so proud of it because it's what we know, the first one. Uh, and then the second part of what we're doing is voting to assign the TIF. And so basically you already voted for the TIF. That part's done. We did it at town meeting. You all did it. And today we just need to assign it because David formed an LLC. Um, so it's a pretty simple process, but Suzanne is here to answer any questions you might have.
I, I would just reiterate that it is a very simple process for both, um, the CPA agreement, just to sign that. It is exactly the. Reflects the term sheets with additional language, um, you know, that just to make it a, a, um, sound agreement. And then the assignment, uh, was anticipated with regard to the TIF agreement. So we anticipated that this project would be assigned and that the board. Would review and accept that.
Were there any, um, changes from the, the first draft? I'm actually looking at one that I thought was an increase, but I might be mistaken. Um.
In terms of the terms, in terms of the actual terms of the agreement, no, there weren't changes to it. The only, the only, um, the, the difference between a term sheet and an agreement, it's just really sort of the remedies and the binding agreement and the. Um, process. So that's what's in the, the agreement as opposed to any changes in the terms.
Okay.
Any other questions from select members? Well, uh, let's make this official. I just need a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the select board approve and sign the community partnership agreement with Amazon.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Dick. All right. Uh, if there's no other discussion, I'll, we'll have our roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColergero, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valancourt, yes.
And Chris Nobley, aye. Passes 5-0. We've got ourselves, uh, executed community partnership agreement with Amazon. And now we just need a vote to sign the agreement for the TIF, uh, with Amazon and Hillwood. So if I give a motion for that, please.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, Mr. Chair, I move to vote to sign the assignment of the TIF agreement with Amazon and Hillwood.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Phil. And our roll call vote, please.
Uh, Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColergero, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valancourt, yes.
And Chris Nobley, aye. Passes 5-0 and, uh, we are now another step on the path to this. So. Thank you, town and everybody worked hard on this.
Uh, sorry, Mr. Chair, if you all could just coordinate tomorrow to come in and sign, um, the documents so that we can get them over to the state that they are waiting for the TIF assignment. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Will do. Uh, all right. And, uh, now our appointment subcommittee, we've got a couple of, uh, appointments to make tonight, correct?
We do, Mr. Chair. Um, so we are submitting Stephanie Odd's name for the cultural council appointment and Kevin Doobie. Um, for the sustainability committee. Um, Stephanie's been a long-time community volunteer. She's an employee of the Andover Library and so is a consumer. Um, or sees the backend of how a lot of times, um, programming through libraries are funded through the cultural council. And so she's coming at it with that professional perspective in another community, um, but as a consumer of the services. Um, also known as events that are so often put on by our own local cultural council. So, um, she brings a lot of enthusiasm and excitement to it. And I think that she would, um, be a great addition and Laura can occur. And so we're happy to submit Stephanie's name. Um, uh, in Kevin Doobie's case, so Kevin, you know, has a long and strong interest in sustainability. Um, that committee is one where we don't have limits to members and it's a pretty exciting, I think, committee to join. And, you know, we had a great conversation with Kevin about, you know, the possibilities by joining that committee and accessing different, um. Passions that he has when it comes to, uh, not necessarily climate change, but just more broadly, you know, how do we be more energy efficient and, and be more thoughtful without the use of energy? And so, um, again, another person that I think that we were happy to submit, um, to the full board for appointment.
Great. Excellent. Excellent. So if I give a motion for approving our appointees from the subcommittee?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that the select board appoint Stephanie Odd to the cultural council for a term ending June 30th, 2022. And Kevin Doobie to the sustainability committee for a term ending June 30th, 2023.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Rosemary. And our roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColergero, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valancourt, yes.
And Chris Nobley, aye. We welcome Stephanie and Kevin. Can't let it go, Dick. Gotta, gotta, gotta push you on the.
Maybe we can do that once a month if we have multiple appointments. But yes, thank you to all our volunteers, especially to Kevin, Kevin and Stephanie for stepping up and being part of, um. Of the town and, and helping the town improve. And like I said in the past, all of our volunteers certainly make this town a great place to lurk. Live, work, learn and play. So thank you all.
And I appreciate you, Dick. You know, you, you really kind of always remind us of, of that. So I always appreciate kind of bringing that to notice. Okay.
Well, I carry that forward from Selectman Watson, who used to do that every time, often through her terms. So credit goes to, uh, to Select, to Tracy.
All right. Well, thank you for keeping it going.
I think she often used the word screeching halt.
Oh, yeah.
Right, right, right. Yep.
I'll incorporate that next time. I forgot about those words.
All right. We'll hold you to it, Dick. Uh, consent items. Uh, we just have one, uh, accepting a grant in the amount of $40,000. From the municipal discretionary funds for meals from local restaurants to be distributed by the YMCA.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know we don't typically discuss items on the consent calendar. Um, we usually just vote on them, but I, I did have Andrew stick around in case you had any questions.
So just 30 seconds, just kind of let folks know what's, what's different about this.
Yeah. So the basic premise of this program, and this has been very successful, and Andrew, you jump in any way you need to. This is very successful in Haverhill, Andrew, I believe, or Methuen. Which one was it? So either Haverhill, oh, you can't talk, you can't talk. It's either Haverhill or Methuen, very popular in Haverhill or Methuen. And basically what we're doing is we are going to be taking a pool of money and giving contracts to local restaurants. Um, in order to create mails for people who don't have food in North Andover. Um, it's just kind of, it's achieving both of our goals, right? We're really dealing with food insecurity that we're seeing really, um, throughout town. One, but two, we're also inserting some money, um, through these catering contracts into our different restaurants. So I think this is going to be a huge win for the community. Um, the Y is partnering with us on it. They will be the ones who will be giving the mails out. The, um, we will have an application for the restaurants. And what we will do is we're gonna actually give preference to restaurants who either applied for outside dining. Or who applied for our grant program already. So the different grants that we have run. Um, but I will say in talking with the people who have run this for some of the other communities, um, they were able to really distribute the, um. The funding to a lot of different restaurants. And so we're excited about being able to help with that.
What a neat way for the community to reach out, for restaurants to get some business. It's went all the way around. So thank you for facilitating.
Win for those and with food insecurity and win for the restaurants. Um, so excellent. Excellent job, Andrew.
I'm sorry, can you guys hear me now?
We can.
Okay, great. I, I think Melissa probably covered it all, but I was having a mic issue. There are some, apologies for not being able to. I think Mike, Melissa covered it perfectly.
I had your back. You've had mine before. Don't worry.
Uh, so with that, uh, let's, uh, let's do this formally.
I'll make a motion. Mr. Chair, I'll move that the board of selectmen accept the grant in the amount of $40,000. From the municipal discretionary fund for meals from local restaurants to be distributed by the YMCA.
Second.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll second that.
And our roll call vote, please.
Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColergero, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valancourt, yes.
And Chris Nobley, aye. Uh, 5-0. We accept this, this grant and happy to do so. Thank you again, Andrew and, and Melissa. Um, we've got approval of our minutes from the open session of January 25th, 2021. Sorry? Uh, any comments or any corrections to those minutes?
No, I just want to say the minutes are very detailed lately. It's really, uh, very, uh, very well done.
Uh, very good. Thank you. Can I have a motion to accept these well-done minutes?
Sure. It's a motion that we accept the minutes from January 25th, 2021 as written.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll second.
Thank you. And a roll vote?
Uh, Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColergero, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valancourt, yes.
And Chris Nobley, aye. We accept the minutes from January 25th, 2021. Um, old business. We have anything on the, on the table, any, anyone? Okay. Town managers report, we covered the budget and COVID. What's left?
One quick thing. Um, so we, we did do round one of the restaurant and personal services, um, grants. We actually have funding left, so we're reopening it. Um, it will still have personal services and restaurants eligible, but also auto repair. I know, um, you brought that up at the last meeting. Um, and so that was reissued out today. So if you see, if you know of anybody who'd want to apply, please send them to that direction, but it was shared, um, today. So just an update on that.
Great, great. It's nice to see that keep running. Um, all right. Last we've got, uh, select board members update. Going around the horn? Wait once, twice. All right. Well, again, thank you, everyone. Our next meeting will be in two weeks on the. What is that? The 22nd? Is that right? Yep. And, uh, we'll, we'll see you then. So with that, I'll just hear a motion for us to adjourn, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, a second.
Thank you. And our roll vote.
Uh, Laura Bates, aye.
Phil DeColergero, aye.
Rosemary Smedele, aye.
Richard Valancourt, yes.
And Chris Nobley, aye. Thank you, everybody for listening tonight. We'll see you in two weeks. Take care, stay healthy.